I call to order the November 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment, Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Aaron Laurel.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding 826 West Capitol Avenue, the party, Texas Patel, and to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of approval to initiate or intervene in an action, and no action was taken. That brings us then to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from having, taking action or having a discussion on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the front door, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer, and we use that timer to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, I think, yes, that indicates which item the council is currently considering. We take the speaker request cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item, either than item, other than 1A. Once the council's questions or the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards, so if you're intending to speak on an item this evening that's on the agenda, please be sure to turn in one of the yellow cards prior to the end of the staff report. We also know that for some folks, speaking in public can present some anxiety and discomfort and other related symptoms, so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls, or actually even any applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we've got one principal request to speak under item 1A, and that's by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Willie Mole, West Sacramento, for the record. I noticed since the action was taken to provide temporary housing for the homeless folks on the river, I noticed more and more retailers' shopping carts are being used by those people, and I'm sure those cost a lot more than carts like what I have now or the larger ones. And I would encourage the retailers to start providing for the public opportunities to buy our own shopping carts, because hardly any place over here in West Sacramento offers them, and it would save them money, I would think, and also encourage more people to shop at our local retailers. So, and as far as making repairs, right now, my first impression, if you want somebody to repair it, I would take it to the bike shop, because, believe it or not, it was way back in the 1950s, I used to fix up bicycles and resell them, and since that time, I haven't had any problem fixing up shopping carts. So, in fact, about 10 days ago, I was on 8th and Capitol Mall, and an elderly lady from West Sac, she just bought a cart from one of our retailers, but that particular one, the wheel had broken off on it because holes had been drilled inside where the wheels were, and that was the first cart I'd ever seen like that. Anyway, I had some extra wheels on me, and I went ahead and traded her my smaller cart for her larger one, and made hers work for me temporarily, and besides that, my little cart, that I replaced wheels with, was sturdier ones, while they were more her size, that cart was more her size, so she didn't lose any time or get delayed, and she was able to move on, and that made me feel pretty good. So, after all, over the years, many people have come to my rescue when I had my blackouts from my seizures and so forth, so I figured it was only appropriate that I come to her rescue, and so if I appear to be a little bit of a pack rat, well, sometimes I carry little replacement parts to help out others, and so I think we need more people with their own shopping carts and fewer of them taking the grocery and other carts from the retailers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, and then we have invited Lisa Baker with the Yolo County Housing Authority, who's one of the lead, the lead agency partners with us and the rest of Yolo County, and many, many, many others in the public sector and in the civic and faith sectors, to provide an update and a status report, check in on the Bridge to Housing program. So thank you for coming, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, guests. I am indeed honored to be able to represent the entire coalition, very exciting. One of the unique things that makes Yolo special, and West Sacro in particular, a wonderful place to live and work, is its ability to volunteer and to step up for those in need, and this has been absolutely no exception to that. I know you got a report on the moving day. It is now, believe it or not, the beginning of the eighth day since folks relocated from the river. I am happy to say that not a single person has moved out, and there have been, since day, there were a couple incidents on the first day, but since then, there have actually been no arrests or hospitalizations since that time, and folks seem to be settling into their temporary assignment very well, and so it is going pretty good. All but six folks have already applied for their permanent housing application, and we expected to pick up those final six today. They have mostly been assessed for medical conditions, and Elica was there today doing mobile doctors, and so folks who needed follow-up medical appointments were receiving those on site, and it was very gratifying to see, I was there myself. We have additional partners, Mercy Faith Coalition, and the Food Bank, among others, along with Social Services, who are providing lunches and dinners for them, as well as food for them to do some limited food preparation of their own. That's pretty exciting, and many, many donors stepping up to assist us. The residents themselves, if you haven't been by there, have formed cleanup details, and they have cleaned the exterior of the property, and they are actually in the midst of trimming landscaping, so if you haven't been out there, the bushes in front are all nice little squares and circles, and they're working their way to the back of the property, so it's very nice. In addition, the residents have formed a small maintenance team for those who have maintenance skills, and they're working directly with our senior maintenance to do the light maintenance opportunities around the complex, and they will be forming a work crew doing some additional volunteer work within the units. We are providing management eight hours a day, seven days a week, on a split shift, as well as we have hired one of the members of the community to serve as our volunteer liaison, and he's doing an absolutely stellar job of helping people to acclimate and to represent management's position on issues. I really want to call out NCT for their partnership as well. Today, they delivered five wonderfully multicolored benches, because there is no indoor common meeting room, and there is no outdoor furniture, so we now have five out of, I think, the 10 benches we're going to be getting, and I understand the picnic tables are finished and will be painted tomorrow, and then delivered to us. All in all, it's been pretty amazing, and the number of people who have really settled into it and who are actually actively working their case has been very gratifying. We are working right now with the county to identify a partner who's going to be coming in with a 12-step program for folks, because there's been a lot of asking for that. And in addition, lots of folks have bicycles, most of, and that's their primary mode of transportation, so they have also asked for a bicycle repair workshop, and so we'll be looking for an opportunity for them for that. Very wonderful to see. Thank you for your leadership on this, and I really appreciate you and the impetus from the West Sacramento Police Department to be able to be part of it.
Are there, does anyone have any questions about, or Mr. or your manager, is there anything that you wanted to add? I think Mr. Lowell might be a good bike repair volunteer as well. I just, I want, and I was by a couple of days ago to the site myself, and you could see the energy and the hope and the, just the intensity of both services and commitment by the, by all the folks volunteering and all the agencies, but also by the, by the residents who have been moved from the river to the motel. And we had, we've had extensive discussions about, about this project and our homeless strategy more generally, and, you know, over the, over the many, many years of homeless efforts in our, in our community, and this is true communities across the country, many, many disappointments about, you know, efforts that have been tried and not succeeded, and we're still, as you say, just at week, at day eight, but a great deal has been accomplished up to this, up to this stage. Many of the, many of the areas that we're the most concerned about so far, at least have been, have been managed both by the agencies and by the residents, and the, just the level of effort and enthusiasm by all the folks who, who I think are inspired by the possibility here. I mean, it is, this is a pilot, you know, it's, it's time limited, and for, you know, in terms of this, this specific set of residents, and it's because we have a lot to learn about whether this approach really can work, and what it takes for it to work, and what will it take for it to work better, not because we knew we had the panacea and the answer to all answers that no one else besides us had ever discovered, but that it was worth trying this, and I think we're, so far, we're all encouraged, knowing that the, our performance metric is not that of the 71 individuals originally that were camping on the river that, you know, this was not a success unless all 71 of them were in, in, in permanent housing with, with, you know, good family-supporting jobs and no issues of mental health or drug use or anything else. That, that's not, that was not the, the expectation when we began, but we're trying to make a dent in, in the problem for both those individuals and for the impacts on the rest of the community as well. And so, the, I, I just, I think it's, you know, our, the city's organization, the police department, other city departments have also been, you know, stepping up, but also just a lot of community members, and it's been, it has been, and a lot of volunteers, so it's been inspiring, and I think we're all hopeful that it continues to, to work in this particular instance, in that we, we're getting some good lessons about both the other initiatives that we might design and, based on the lessons that, that are coming forward from this project.
I will say, we actually are learning a lot about different ways in which to engage, and this is also informing the Tenure Plan on Homelessness Commission, of which Mark Hanson is the city's representative, and so we are extremely excited about being able to fold that into the plan revision, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and thanks to our county supervisor, Oscar Vegas, who's been a real leader on this program, you know, out on the, out on the, actually, both of our supervisors are out on the river, you know, doing, helping with the transition and with the move and with the cleanup, both Oscar Vegas and Matt Rexrode, but the, but the coordination between the county and the Housing Authority and the other public and nonprofit agencies and the city, and it's our, our various departments has been extraordinary, and our supervisors have definitely been a, a key, key players in making, making that happen and articulating the key, the, the vision around, about what we're trying to accomplish here, so, thanks. All right, thank you. That brings us then to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Kristof?
A couple, Mr. Mayor. As far as the West Sac JPA, the major issue for us is the, with West Sac SAFCA, and that is, we are in the, we are negotiating with property owners over the value of their land so that we can complete the levy facilities and flood protection issues that we need to complete. We are right at the very initial stage, and so there's a long way to go, but at the same time, we're slowly but surely making that progress to contact each one of the property owners as far as value goes, make, make a bid, and see what happens. The other one is Sac Regional, and the, the, the big issue there was the refinance of the revenue bonds, which is on our agenda, agenda item number three, and so we'll have more detail on that as far as agenda item number three when Paul and Phil give their report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristof. Councilmember Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Monday, I participated in the Water Resources Association of Yolo County Board Meeting. We re-elected Bill Marlborough of Woodland as Chair of the Association and Cecilia Aguirre Curry of Winters as the Vice Chair. We also heard a number of reports, including the Integrated Water Management Plan of Yolo County is moving forward. We also heard that the Yolo Flood Governance Study is complete and was presented to the Yolo County Board of Supervisors. It's available online for any, anyone that's interested. We also discussed the impact of Proposition 1 on groundwater, water and other storage projects. Funding's available, and I know that that will be forthcoming, and more information about that. Importantly, we talked about the Water Resources Association of Yolo County potentially serving as a convener for the planning forum on determining what agency or agencies will serve as Yolo County's Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and that is required, that it's required the county has a groundwater sustainability plan, so potentially, the agency is, is looking for support of member agencies and municipalities to kind of end up being the convener and potentially serving in that capacity. So there's more to come on that, but that was our, that was our big item on Monday. Thanks.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I attended and chaired last Monday's, November 10th, meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District, and it was a relatively short meeting with short agenda items, but there were a couple of items I wanted to bring to the council's attention. One of them had to do with a report that was received by board members regarding California Local Streets and Roads Needs Assessment, a 2014 update, and the Transportation District Director will be making that available to all of our public work staff and to cities across the county, as it did provide some level of reporting on roadway and conditions in cities. We're not quite clear where the data came from, but it was an interesting report that public works directors will be working with. The second one had to do with, in the director's report, which I will forward on, the executive director's update on, we've been getting and tracking the impact of the downtown, the construction of the downtown entertainment and sports complex. The construction of that has, as we predicted, would affect the on-time performance of some of the downtown bus service, and it's been impacting it on. I want to thank Mr. Lowell, who has been also verbally letting us know that that has been impacted, but there are some, some areas and some bus routes that are being impacted by more than a few minutes, so I will pass it on to, to the board members so they can see that, but one of the things that they were going to try to do is make sure they reach out to our, the cities, especially Davis and West Sac, where predominantly the routes that are being impacted are coming from, to make sure they're, try to find ways to make sure that, that that construction is causing problems, and we can communicate that clearly to, clearly to the writers. So anyway, I'll pass that on, and, or I'll pass it on to the clerk to pass it on to everybody else, so, that's the only update I have, thank you.
It reminds me, the city of Sacramento has been, I think this week was considering, at least in concept form, some changes to the street grid not too far from the river, and what I, what everyone that's commented on that has ignored is the fact that there will no longer be an I Street Bridge entering into the, into the existing downtown. It might be useful for us, at least at some point, to have a workshop on the, the entertainment and sports facility, the remove, the, essentially, the relocation of the I Street Bridge to Rail Yards Boulevard, and there will be implications, and we certainly ought to be paying attention to what's, what Sacramento's contemplating, but I think even for us to have a sort of your, not a full-blown traffic and study and all that, but, but just to, you know, to give us your best thinking about what some of the implications of that are, because I think, I have to remind myself that the Tower Bridge will be the only connection until the Broadway Bridge is built between us and the existing downtown of Sacramento. The Rail Yards Boulevard will be the new bridge, so, anyway. Let's see, the only, the only report is actually a request from me, which is, I was invited this morning to the White House on December 10th for the President's Early Learning Summit, and it's, it's kind of a big deal, and we might be asked to, I don't know for sure yet, but we may, the President will be there, we may be asked to present on, on Universal Preschool for West Sacramento, so I would like to go. I think it would be good for our, it's an important opportunity to showcase, continue to showcase our, what we're doing here on that program, both for future funding, for future partnerships as well. And if the President of the United States wants to talk about something great going on in West Sac, I think we should, we should, we should let him. So I would, I, but we have a council meeting that, that day, and so I wanted to ask the council if there, if there would be a willingness to potentially reschedule our council meeting on the 10th to the 17th. The 10th, I mean, I realize we have, there are five of us, and one of us can go missing, but that's also the night that we would be swearing in, my, me, so I'd like to be here for my own swearing in, if possible. So I'm kind of in a, my fear was that the President would pick that one date, and his, his team did, so I wanted to ask the council if you would consider a meeting date change to the 17th. Okay, so if there's no...
I had scheduled, we already scheduled for the 17th.
Yes, we did, we did, thank you. Okay, if there's no objection, then we, then we'll move the meeting to the 17th. Oh, yes, sorry, okay, so thank you, thank you very much for doing that, and Mayor Potam Johannesen?
Yeah, just a couple of items. The homeless executive commission for the homeless tenure plan, actually, it's a subcommittee met on November 6th, and there's going to be three town hall meetings that are going to go through Yolo County, one in Davis, West Sac, and Woodland, and these are going to be basically buttressing on some of the homeless work that each of the different cities is, is doing. Of course, the Bridge to Housing is going to be prominent, but it's to basically create public awareness of the homeless issue, as we're really starting to achieve now with what's going on in West Sac, and try to generate the, kind of the support for some of the things that may be spinoffs from, from the programs that we're at least looking at now. So I just want to give you kind of a heads up that those will be coming. And then, the Yolo County Solano Air Quality Management District met on November 12th. There really weren't any items of significance, except that Chris White from the California Fuel Cell Partnership made a great presentation on fuel cell technology and zero emission vehicles in preparation for the West Sac, opening of the West Sac Public Fueling Station on December 10th, and, and there, there are a few skeptics on that board, but, you know, most, most of this is really, as we've talked about before, getting the infrastructure in and making sure that we have facilities to be able to fuel zero emission vehicles, which are going to be marketing, I think, on sale end of next year, or end of next year. So, it's a great presentation, maybe at some point, she can make a presentation to this group, too, once we have the fueling station up and running.
All right, thank you. All right, then, if that's it on communications, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions. Just a reminder, the deadline for applications for city boards and commissions is November 28th. That application and the description of the commissions and the boards are on the city's website, under the city clerks section, under the city hall tab or something like that on the site, so those are due on November 28th, and we certainly encourage a broad, you know, range of citizens in our community to apply. It's not a heavily involved application, you can definitely, you can do it in 15 minutes, maybe 25, if you're really thoughtful about it, so take, you know, if you're, if you have any interest in serving and volunteering in the community in a leadership capacity, please take a look at, at that. Then for members of the council, requesting your nominations for commissions, for each of the, each of those commissions, and would ask that, that I get, that you send me that your nominations by the 31st of December, or, yeah, and, and then we'll be, we will, we'll have that on the agenda for January 4th for the actual appointments, that's the current plan, so. All right, that then brings us to item 2, which is a presentation by the Yolo County Habitat Natural Communities Conservation Power, Conservation Plan Joint Powers Agency Status. And Ms. Hamilton, you introducing this item?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. This evening, we do have the Executive Director of the Yolo County HCP NCCP Joint Powers Agency, and she will be, Ms. Marchand will be giving the presentation tonight, and she does have a short PowerPoint.
Great. I see Lisa Baker's leaving, I forgot to note, just on Bridge to Housing, anyone that's interested in, we've gotten a lot of inquiries about donating to the program, and I know so has the county and the Housing Authority, there, and those donations are, can be, can be made at newhopecdc.org. New Hope CDC, I guess CDC probably stands for Community Development Corporation or something like that, so newhopecdc.org, if you're interested in making a donation of any kind to Bridge to Housing. All right, sorry, Ms. Marchand, back, back to NCCP.
Good evening, Mayor Cabal, and members of the council. Petra Marchand, Executive Director of the Yolo County HCP NCCP Joint Powers Agency. Very much appreciate the opportunity to present tonight, and I also want to thank Councilmember Ledesma for chairing the JPA during an exceptionally busy year this year, which I'll be providing you an update on. It was a priority of the JPA Board that, to make sure that each of the member agency receives this, receives these type of presentations on a regular basis, so please feel free to ask me any questions that you have during the presentation, or I can take them at the end as well. So by way of introduction, I really wanted to start by providing some good news, which is that the JPA has made significant progress on the plan in the last year, and we are on schedule and on budget, which was significant accomplishments, given a, a plan of this complexity and size. We have drafted eight of the nine chapters that are a part of this plan, which, as most of you may recall, is a 50-year permit that authorizes take of endangered species and also provides for the conservation of those species in Yolo County over 50 years. And the wildlife agencies have reviewed six of eight of those chapters, and remarkably enough, have reviewed, turned around their comments in four weeks or less. Normal comment turnaround time for wildlife agencies is between three or four months, and they've been putting a lot of their own personal effort into this plan and meeting some really tight deadlines to make sure that we can demonstrate to the member agencies that we're making progress and, and staying on target. As you know, also, the JPA coordinates Swainson's Hawk mitigation for the county, I know this is of special interest to West Sacramento because of the level of development in your community, and what that means is that we coordinate the placement of permanent easements on conservation lands, and then the developers can purchase mitigation credits from those private landowners. As a result of the general increase in development activity over the last year, we are running out of credits at the JPA, so we established a science and technical advisory committee to evaluate the habitat on potential sites. We created an application process, we had seven landowners that applied, and the JPA Board will be making decisions on which sites to move forward with in December. So on both of the major activities of the JPA, we've made some significant progress, and I'm, and I'm happy to report that to you tonight. So with regard to the, the plan itself, the Yolo HCP NCCP, I just wanted to remind you of the schedule, this is what the Board keeps us on target on every single board meeting. And we are planning to release the second administrative draft of the plan in March of 2015, and then that will be followed by the pre-public review draft in August of 2015, the public review draft and the EISEIR in 2016, summer of 2016, the final draft in December 2016, and then the issuance of the permits in 2017. This is a process that's been underway for a number of years, so the fact that we're even this close to the end is a positive sign, even though I know that it's still hard to imagine that we have this much time in front of us. In terms of the JPA finances, which I know is also of interest to all of the member agencies, the state and federal government have been extremely generous with grants, over 90% of the funds for this planning process are coming from state and federal grants. We've exhausted the two state grants that were awarded in the last couple of years, and we're currently working on an almost $1 million federal grant, and that will carry us through the draft EISEIR, and the state has invited us to apply for a third state grant in August of this year that would carry us through to the final draft. So I know that the member agencies have had to contribute their own funds, which was very difficult to do over the last couple of years, so I wanted to make sure you recognize that that is more than well-matched by, by state and federal grants, and I anticipate that those grants will continue to be awarded until the end of the, the planning process. So just a brief overview of what this plan does, as you may recall, we started off with 32 species, and the JPA Board, in coordination with the advisory committee, cut it down to 12 species. The species that are driving this plan are the ones that are probably familiar to you in West Sacramento, it's Swainson's Hawk, Giant Garter Snake, Elderberry Beetle, and the Western Burrowing Owl. So these are the only species that we'll be conserving habitat for over the 50-year period, and they're also the only ones that development activities will be covered for as a result of our, our permit. This is the area of the county where all these species are found, obviously, they like West Sacramento a lot, as well as Davis. Obviously, they like West Sacramento a lot, as well as Davis.
Who wouldn't? Oh, quite Davis.
So, and most important about this slide is just to point out that they're really not in the foothills. So most of these species are found along our riparian corridors and on the valley floor. And we have a significant number of, of the bird species in the county, as well as the snake, which you can see near West Sacramento and in the Yolo Bypass. As a result of the location of the species, we've decided to focus the conservation in that same area where the species are located. So the hashed area on this graph is where we will be acquiring conservation easements. We are not, at this point, planning on doing any conservation except for protect, potentially some targeted habitat restoration along the riparian corridors outside of the, the valley floor. So it really will stay in that area. I also wanted to just briefly provide you with some information about why the state cares so much about doing this type of conservation in Yolo County. This is a map that shows the Swainson's Hawk population in the state of California as a whole. And the yellow area is obviously the Central Valley. And if you do a, look at the close-up there, you see the Swainson's Hawk is heavily concentrated in the area that includes Yolo County. So it's not that this bird is found everywhere in the state, and we just happen to be a county where they have an interest in it. It's actually a really important component of recovery of the Swainson's Hawk. Same is true for the Western Burrowing Owl. Although the Western Burrowing Owl is more widely distributed throughout the state, it's got significant populations in the Sacramento region, especially Yolo County, and around the city of Davis in particular. And again, Giant Garter Snake, it probably has the most prominent concentration in our area. The snake doesn't move as far as the, the birds do, and a lot of its wetlands habitat has been eliminated over the course of time in California. And so it's really benefiting a significant amount by the habitat, both wetlands and rice lands that are in the Yolo Bypass in Yolo County. So the reason why the state and federal government are so interested in completing this plan is in large part because these species are located here. So the big question that everyone asks about this plan is, you know, what does it mean? Most people understand that it's a permit for, you know, take of these endangered species, and in return, we're, we are going to be conserving habitat for those species over 50 years. But what does it mean in terms of cost, and what does it mean in terms of actual acres in Yolo County? So Yolo County has about 650,000 acres total. We have estimated, by working with the planning directors of the member agencies, that with buildout of your general plans, the, there will be about 13,000 acres of impact over 50 years. So this permit will cover all 13,000 acres of impact from development activities in Yolo County. And that's all four cities in the county, and it includes public infrastructure as well as private development. So the mitigation acres that we will be required to conserve over the 50 years as part of this permit is 17,322 acres. The conservation beyond mitigation, which is funded by local funding sources such as the City of Davis Open Space Tax, the Cache Creek Resource Management Plan Program that Yolo County runs, as well as foundation grants, should be anywhere between 12,000 and 15,000 acres. And then the total conservation over the life of the plan then will be between 30 and 33,000 acres. These, this is the JPA's proposal. This is a, we do have to reach agreement with the wildlife agencies on this commitment, and as Cheryl Ledesma knows, we are in the midst of those conversations right now. So these numbers could change, but I don't think that they will radically change. So this really kind of gives you a sense of the type of conservation that we're proposing over the, the 50-year period. So again, about 30,000 acres of the 650,000 acres that are in the county. And another interesting fact is that this 30,000 acres would build on approximately 100,000 acres that have already been protected in the county over the course of time. So the, the county and the member jurisdictions and the nonprofit organizations in the county have done a great job without this type of a process in place of conserving habitat in the county. And this plan will just build on those efforts and in addition, provide that, that take authorization that the member agencies have been looking for, for so long. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the program or our progress, and thank you for your support of the Joint Powers Agency over this last year.
Any other questions? Mr. Ledesma?
I'll just make a couple of brief statements and... A couple of brief statements. First of all, thanks Petraia for coming out tonight and briefing the council. And, and I think I've tried to keep the council up to date on this GPA for the last few years as we've really worked our way back to getting, getting this far, which is pretty remarkable given where we started a few years ago, and the fact that, two things. One is that the plan has made so much progress, and it's a result of a lot of hard work from Petraia, her staff, as well as others, the consultants that have been working, and particularly I want to pay some respects and certainly thank the folks at the state wildlife and the federal wildlife agencies who have been absolutely engaged. And, and as, as much as any, anybody, any state agency I've witnessed in my four years in office, they have been really engaged in this process and really trying to, as much as possible, keep us on track. It's taken a few course corrections along the way, but, but, but they have certainly been cooperative, more than cooperative, to get, get us this far. The other part too is, I'll make mention of, is that the rest of the, the rest of the agencies, the member jurisdictions, and the, in the county who have all been engaged, board members, along with Petraia, who have been state engaged. This is a, this is a weekly board activity. We are, as Petraia said, we are working with the agencies on a, on a monthly basis, weekly basis. We have two big meetings this week, full-day meetings, where these types of negotiations really get drilled down into. And oftentimes, we're called on three o'clock or four o'clock, I think, two weeks ago on a Friday, to get updates and provide direction. So it has taken an enormous amount of engagement from all the member agencies and the, the board members there. So they, they, they also need to be recognized to get into this far. It is two years out that we'll see the completed plan, but the part, I want to impart on all the, on all the cities and the county, and I'll be going out with Petraia in the next few weeks, visiting the other councils. The part I want to impart on everybody is the change we're making, because we are reaching a critical point in the plan that we are actually getting to numbers. As Petraia said, you saw the numbers that we have put out there, and we're working with the agencies to kind of finalize. But that will in turn drive the cost, and in turn drive the plan, which then has to be implemented. So in short, we are, in fact, creating a new agency, which was always the intention to implement this plan after 2017. So part of what we've been trying to do is begin that planning, along with trying to get the plan together, along as, as well as getting our, all of our fiscal house in order, now we're trying to set the stage for the creation of a new agency, one that can carry on the plan past 2017 for the 50-year term of the permit. So again, that's an important point we're making and an important turn, but it's the right one. We felt it's time to start having those conversations with our other cities and the county to make sure they're aware that we're making that turn, especially as we come up to the 2015 budget cycle coming up. So anyway, those are a few comments I wanted to make, but thanks to Petraia, public thank you to Petraia, who puts in a lot of hours on this, on this endeavor. And thanks to our staff and our Charlene, Charlene shows up to the same board meetings that I do to make sure West Sacramento's interests are looked out for. But the, the most important, important interest we had is to get this plan to completion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks Petraia, and thanks to Mr. Ledesma. I mean, this was a, this was a failed, this is the Somalia of Yolo County JPA's. I mean, it was a complete disaster, and it was falling apart, bankrupt, with really no way out, and really the two of you with some help. But the, the two of you have really been at the center of rescuing the agency. And although it's a completely invisible agency to the general public and to most everyone else on the planet, it, when it does its job, when, if it fails, it's a disaster for, for these species, for our ability to continue improving and developing our own community and the rest of the county. So on, 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 on both dimensions. And so it's really fantastic work that you all have done. That's been, that's made the JPA, I think, much, much smarter than it was before too. And I'm looking at, for example, the, what you're negotiating right now in terms of mitigation rates and all that stuff compared to where we had, where headed, where it had, had drifted to, to ring, you know, five or six years ago, is, you know, in some respects, maybe we needed the, the, we didn't need to quite that level of bankruptcy, but we, we did need a little shock to the system about, okay, what's, what's really reasonable about how to, how to make this thing work? So I, personally, I really appreciate it. Now, I served on this board 17 years ago, 16, 17 years ago. The, the number one concern that, that was present in West Sacramento at the time was, is this board, or is the agency going to have the ability to decide which of our development projects move forward within the, is the board going, is the agency going to have some discretionary authority to say, hmm, there's five development projects pending, and one in Davis, two in Woodland, three in West Sacramento, that's six, I guess. But, and we've decided that that one goes, that one doesn't go, that, that one doesn't go. So at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that we're running up against the, you know, a, a limit on the number of permits that we can issue. And so you're looking at exactly this question of how to manage that against. Can you talk a little bit about how that, how you're engaged in, in, in that work?
Sure. Well, first of all, in terms of the permit itself, which is what we're working on, that will cover all of your activities. We've worked really closely with Charlene to make sure that everything associated with the general plan and any of the development activities that you're proposing over the next 50 years is covered. In the beginning of my presentation, I was talking specifically about our interim Swainson's Hawk mitigation program. So what we do, it's a service, and it was actually kind of a, I think, a invisible service, except for the few people who took advantage of it, of the JPA, and has been since this JPA was constituted in 2002. And what that program is, is that right now, you're required under state law to mitigate for impacts of Swainson's Hawk foraging habitat. So if you develop 200 acres in West Sacramento, and you build houses, and you impact foraging habitat, you have to conserve 200 acres of Swainson's Hawk habitat somewhere else. So the JPA, it does, the JPA was, is responsible for, on behalf of all five member agencies, either collecting a fee for that mitigation and then purchasing Swainson's Hawk easements to conserve habitat for this species, or what we found is a better idea, because it avoids the collection of fees and makes sure that habitat conservation takes place closer to the time of impact. We actually worked with private landowners to establish easements on property prior to development occurring. We essentially create our own type of bank. And then we have a certain number of credits available, and there's a, a process through which a developer can approach a landowner, say, I need to purchase 100 credits. They negotiate a price, and the JPA executive director has to sign off on the sale of those credits. It's reviewed by attorneys, it's a very formal process. So as a result of development picking up over the last year, we had a number of acres that were sitting for years because the economy had stagnated and the development wasn't as, at a high as levels it was prior to the recession. And now the economy's picking back up again, development's picking back up, and we are about to sell out of the existing mitigation credits that we have. So we are busily, because it's a service we provide to the agencies, establishing additional easements on private property so that developers can quickly access those credits. Without the system, it can take landowners, you know, any, any land, any development developer that has to, an impact of more than 40 acres, needs to actually go out and find an easement. And so this cuts down the time that's needed for a developer to mitigate for Swainson's Hawk impacts from however long it takes to negotiate a deal and put an easement on a property to just a couple of weeks. And so that's a separate service that we provide, but we are definitely not, to answer your specific question, making decisions about what projects can move forward. We're only providing a service and trying to help the member agencies meet their, the development mitigation requirements.
So if you, if you run out of, if you run out of credits, is it just first come, first served, or? You mentioned this, that the science, I think the Science and Technical Committee was involved in this process. I wasn't, it wasn't, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me whether they were involved in evaluating the development projects, or whether they were involved in evaluating the easement purchases.
Yeah, that's a great question. There, so we, we're lucky in Yolo County that we have a lot of Swainson's Hawk habitat, so we get to choose the best properties. So rather than just have, the way, the process that I inherited was that individual landowners would come to the JPA and say, hey, I'm ready to put an easement on our property. And the executive director of the board would decide which easement, which land to place an easement on. So we established a process through which we have bailed, just we're evaluating the value for the Swainson's Hawk of those properties, and we're essentially picking and choosing which are the properties that have the most value for the hawk. And the wildlife agencies like that, because we're eventually going to incorporate all these properties into our reserve, which is the, you know, conservation acres that we acquire over the 50 years. So they definitely like the process of choosing the, the best properties. So that's what that committee is doing. And if we run out of credits, the developers, if it's under 40 acres, can pay a fee. If it's over 40 acres, they would have to go back to the process of acquiring an easement on land elsewhere in the county. And we don't want them to have to do that. So that's why we're rapidly trying to make these recommendations and get to the board in December so that we can make sure that we don't run out.
Okay. All right. So, but you don't reserve, you know, I, just a fine point, is you don't, you don't, the board or the committee don't reserve, say, we know this, we want to make sure we have enough credits available for this woodland project two years from now, so we're gonna, you know, you just walked in the door, Davis project, but, you know, we've got too many Davis projects, so we want to save one for Woodland later. You don't do that, it's essentially a flow.
Right. First come, first served.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, thanks so much, Petraia.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were told that there were going to be a lot of animal pictures, and it was just the same animal picture over and over and over again, so I don't know. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items three through eight. Are there any items in consent to remove, or any items for separate question or comments? All right, item six is consideration of direction to initiate the request for a proposal process to hire a consultant to manage the competitive recruitment process for the city's waste hauling services contract.
Have we had negotiations with waste management already?
At this time, no.
So have we, have we had some contact with waste management? So I, I guess I'm a little confused as to far as why we need to hire a consultant. And we've had a very good relationship with waste management, so what are we doing?
Well, the department, our public works department, met with the city manager's office to discuss the next steps, just knowing that our contract does end in a little over two years. And it was decided that it might be the best time to go out to bid.
For other waste haulers or something? And we haven't talked to waste management in the interim?
Not at this point, no.
Don't you think that would be a good idea? Because, I mean, they've been with the city for 28 years, since its inception. I mean, and, and they've always been very flexible, they've, and, and I'm just trying to figure out, are we trying to reinvent the wheel? Are we trying to reinvent? This was very contentious 20 years ago, okay? Because we had BIF or bid, or whatever that was, and then we had waste management, and it was, it was sort of a contentious thing. But I thought we had gone through a number of reiterations as far as extending the contract or working with waste management to get a little bit better service or cheaper service for this and for that. And I don't see that happening in this scenario.
Well, at this point, I mean, I would leave it up to, you know, council's direction if that's the way we choose to go. I mean, based on conversations that we've had in the city manager's office, and the fact that we haven't ever gone out to bid, we thought that at this point, it might be the time to do so.
Okay.
And it really hasn't anything to do with, as I tried to make clear in the report, it's not really anything to do with waste management's performance, it's just the timing seems right.
All right, okay, okay.
Competitive pressure potentially, or...
And if I may, the request is to retain a consultant to assist us with the procurement process. We have not made the decision, but to get a consultant on board and give us the expertise to be able to ask the right questions, be able to come back, and if the council so chooses to initiate an RFP, but, but get a consultant on board first.
So might I suggest, because I, I support doing this, I mean, just as we did with the city attorney, who we've had no issues or objections with, we've, we, you know, every, every decade or two, I mean, just, I mean, regular, just MBA school, contract, contract management and economic theories, you should be doing this on a relatively frequent basis to assure that you're getting the appropriate market conditions. But it's, it's not just are you happy or not, but are there other, are there other competitors? And are there other services that we haven't just thought about? You know, other cities where, you know, they're collecting, not mulch, what's the, you know, when your, your foods, compost, you know, compost, I mean, other, other sorts of services that may be out there that we're just, you know, we haven't considered, and price and competition, you just, you just don't, I mean, there's no point in having a contract that you, if you are going to keep it for, forever. It's not, it's not a very smart economic choice. So I, I don't, I'm, I get the rationale for it. I do think it might be helpful, though, from what you said, Mr. City Manager, is to, because the request is to, is to get a consultant to initiate the RFP process, but, you know, perhaps the consultant arrangement ought to be a two-stage one, which is to first give an analysis of whether or not, you know, whether or not an RFP should be done, and bring that back to the council, which, which is what you essentially just said. But that's not what, the item doesn't read that way. So, so it'd be... So, so it'd be, you know, you might issue a contract that has two stages to it, the second stage of which will be triggered only if the council decided to move forward with the RFP based on that analysis. Does that make...
I would agree with that.
And perhaps with a laundry list of items that we, new items that we'd want to seek, or items that maybe we would not want to continue to retain in terms of doing something a little more innovative?
Maybe. I mean, I, you, I mean, the point of your, of getting a consultant, I think, was to get the best expertise, and I, so I don't, I mean, I wouldn't presume right now to prejudge what the, what the, you know, what a typical city that's going out to bid on this looks at and looks for, and what some of the changes in the market have been, and the services provided, and the cost structures in 20 years have, have been. But at least to get that first take, bring it back here, and then determine whether or not to want to proceed to the next level. And Prof. Tom Johansson?
Are, are we going to have any input on the ranking criteria? Because, you know, I think when, particularly when you have this type of service, its history is really important, and to be able to operate over a long period of time with reliable service, I think it's, you know, the whole weighting of, I think, for me, is really important. We start looking at ranking, and it tends to be an issue when we start having these things go out. You know, what is a weight factor for this particular factor, that type of thing. So is that something we're going to see before? Because it looks like the schedule, it looks like it's going to be presented to council sometime in March, something like that?
If the council wanted to be part of the process, I mean, that's something that we would consider. It wasn't, at this point, we hadn't really gotten to that much detail. This is a tentative schedule, just based on working backwards from knowing if we do out to bid, we need to have a contract in place about six months prior to the end of the current contract, just to deal with transition time. So as we move forward, if we do go to consultant to just do an analysis of what we need to do, we would definitely consider how that process would go. If we go out to bid, would council be part of the rating process? If that's the council's desire, of course.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to get involved with that process itself. I just want to know, you know, what the ranking is, how it was developed, and the weights that are given. Because, I mean, we've had this issue with the local hire issue over the years, too. You know, what weight do we provide for somebody who's got 100 employees in West Sacramento when we're looking at these types of contracts? So, and those are important considerations, you know, dedication to community and all that, that other stuff. So I just want to be made aware of, you know, when it comes down to developing some ranking, you know, what that is before it's applied.
Definitely.
So I'm not, I don't want a full council debate on this.
Right, just be part of the...
Yeah, to be more, made more aware of the, the whole process.
Definitely.
Yeah, I'd like to be involved. I want to be, I mean, this is the, it's one of the largest contracts, if not the largest one, that we are engaged in. It's a, it's a, it's a massive expense, but, and not by us, but by the people of our community. So I, so I love the incumbent firm. I think the waste management does a fantastic job. They're a great community partner. You know, they're big supporters of our, of West Sacramento, and we don't, we don't get tons of complaints. So it's not, it's not at all about waste management, but we have an obligation, the same way that when, when you, when your colleagues come to us and say, "We want to change our water rates by 25 cents," we hold their feet to the fire and say, "No, no, there are people for whom 25 cents a month makes a big deal." And we have that same obligation in this contract, to make sure that we are assuring the highest level of service and the lowest cost for, for the residents and the, and the businesses of our community. So that, that's why, I mean, this is, this is unlike most, most any other contract that we do, because like, it's our, it's one of our largest departments, essentially, that's contract, fully contracted out, and it deserves, at least every other decade, you know, a hard look, from, from a customer perspective. Mr. Ledesma?
No, I'm just in agreement. I'm in agreement. So if, unless there's any other question, are you looking for a motion on this?
Yeah, maybe, yes. Maybe if you move consent with, with the motion on this one specifically?
Yes, I'll do that, but with the changes and the, because it does not ask specifically for kind of a two-pronged, or two-phased approach.
Just a process.
So with that noted, I'll make the motion for the consent.
Okay. So maybe one way, okay. And so if we just took out of the, out of the words of the action, to initiate the process, the RFP process, so direct staff to hire a consultant to manage the procurement process, and your understanding is this two-stage?
And then we would come back for direction in, in April. Is that correct?
Well, if we're doing, I think it would be quicker than that. We would issue, I would expect to issue an RFP for a consultant to do an analysis first.
Right.
To determine whether the RFP process or negotiating process would be the...
That's my misread, sorry. Okay. Gotcha. All right, so that's Mr. Ledesma's motion. Is there further discussion?
So what is the motion?
To direct staff...
I really don't mind going out. I guess, I just thought that part of the process would be to have a discussion with waste management. I mean, I know that Carol, and I know that our finance director, they have, in essence, sort of put all the pieces together as far as waste management goes, and all that other kind of stuff, that they've done that before. And I just was wondering why we needed to have a consultant now tell us what are the things we should be asking for, and what are the things we don't need to be asking for. I mean, I just thought we had enough expertise within the city to really have a pretty good idea of that, and then work with the waste management people to make sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and all the things that are important are addressed. That's what I thought. But I mean, I don't mind hiring a consultant and doing the, going through the due diligence, because, I mean, I firmly, well, okay.
Further discussion on Mr. Ledesma's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, thanks. All right, seeing no further discussions, so the motion is on the consent agenda with that modi, with that modification, is the direction on item six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to item nine, which is a public hearing to consider activities eligible for community development block grant, CDPG program funding. Please call us.
As you all, the council's aware, the city receives community development block grant funding from HUD through the state small cities CDPG program. The state has recently made very wide-ranging changes to the way program income is handled. Program income is our revenues received from previously funded CDPG activities. And under the new regulations, we must conduct two public hearings before we can get approval to use program income. The first, and that is the hearing we're asking this council to conduct this evening, the first is to simply announce that funds are available, and announce what types of activities may be eligible for funding, and then the second, and then take any public comments. The second, we will hold in, on January 14th, where the city council can adopt a resolution designating CDPG program income to particular activities. As noted in the staff report, the state does allow certain types of activities to be funded with program income. Those include housing activities, such as our first-time homebuyer programs, housing rehab, multifamily rehab, public improvements like street improvements and infrastructure, excuse me, public facilities, acquisition, construction, rehab, things like youth centers and shelters, and those sorts of program, facilities provided they are serving low-income clientele. Code enforcement activities, although there's very, very specific, only certain specific types are allowed. Job creation, primarily business loans, and micro enterprise technical assistance and business loans are the, there are other CDPG eligible activities, but those are the ones that the state has now limited for program income. That's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Can you give us a sense of the ones that are, that used to be eligible that no longer are, so we can change our thinking?
Public services. We, for example, there are, our preschool tuition assistance program, those types of services. Currently, we have a grant that will be, that, we are, our new homeless outreach and services coordinator is, that's a public service activity. So we had to go back and negotiate with HCD, because they had approved that for program income while we wait on the new grant. And then they came out with this rule, so we had to go back and kind of fight and say, "You guys approved it, go ahead and get, let us keep it," which they did, but it will not be allowed in the future. And planning activities, that used to be very common to be used under program income, it's no longer allowed.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. Louis?
Mr. Kristof?
Can we pick and choose some of those? Is that what we're doing here tonight, or the one, two, three, four, five, six? Or are the seven all sort of lumped together?
This evening is a public hearing just to notify the public that this is, that we, the city has funds available. We anticipate receiving anywhere between 180 and 400,000 over the next three years, and that these are the types of activities that can be funded. This gives the community the opportunity to come forward with any suggestions for projects, and also for the council to make any comments to staff about direction you would like to take. But we can't select anything this evening, not until the second public hearing.
Because, I mean, for, for me, it would be things like public improvements, code enforcement, job creation, and micro enterprise assistance. I mean, it's, that is something that I would be pretty supportive of.
And you currently have this, the second hearing set for January 14th, is, is there a time, is there a timeline issue with respect to that, that hearing being at that, at that point? I'm only mentioning this because that's a week or so before our priority setting retreat. And so in an ideal world, we would be looking at where do we want to spend this income in the context of what our priorities are? But is January 14th the last day we can do this?
No, it is not. We can't get our new 2014 contract, though, until we've done that. So it would just delay, you know, probably another month, getting our 2014 contract.
Questions at this time? All right, then, I'm going to open the public hearing on item nine. We don't have any cards in this one, because it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on item nine? Seeing none, I'm going to pause the public hearing. Any other questions or comments to staff regarding the projects? I thought the set of supplemental project, projects that are on the list for current consideration are, they're good starts, so. All right, then, that's sufficient for this item. That brings us to item 10, which is a workshop on the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan.
Sorry about that, and a little technical challenge that we had to deal with there. So, evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight to present the, a workshop on the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan. Before we get started, I want to just walk through, if you can indulge us on the plan that we, we'd like to go through in the workshop tonight. We have a lot of material to cover, covering the plan. We also have, we expect to have a lot of public comment from representative property owners over my left shoulder. And so what we'd like to do is, is get through the entire presentation, and then take questions at the end. The way we're going to divvy it up is, I'm going to give a little bit of background about the plan, go into the scope of our, of our transition plan, and then Rick Toft is going to go through the action plan recommendations that are, make up most of chapter three, and turn it back to me, and then we'll take questions and comment from there, if that sounds okay. We also have Tom Trzynski, our consultant on the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan here tonight. Only if we have technical questions, we might look to Tom to help comment on that. You may know him from his work on the Bridge District previously. So getting started, just a little bit of history. Pioneer Bluff was first developed, as you know, in the 1950s and 60s, really around rail and river barging, industrial development. It wasn't until the city incorporated that the vision was set for mixed-use development, much like the rest of the riverfront. The original city general plan designated the area for mixed-use development, zoned at waterfront, and established a land use policy at the time that had later impacts, particularly in 2004. It made all the industrial uses that were currently there, existing non-conforming uses, limited the expansion or establishment of new industrial uses. In 2003, the Riverfront Master Plan was adopted. That really set the vision for both sides of the river, really reemphasized the city's vision for Pioneer Bluff as, as part of a incorporated urban riverfront, stretching from the High Street Bridge of Washington all the way down to Stone Lock. The ball really got rolling on relocate, on the industrialization in about 2006, when we relocated CEMEX, removed the rail spur, and that was really in the, in the context of the Bridge District, but it had obvious impacts on Pioneer Bluff. As you can see today, the last part of that relocation agreement was the demolition of the silos that's currently occurring. And then, of course, in 2014 is really our, our big year for progress. We got the McGowan Bridge funded and under construction, will be finished at the end of the year. And we also got major funding for the Broadway Bridge to do planning and design work on that. So the process for the plan, I won't go through all the steps we went through here, but you're familiar with when we started. It was about a year ago. We were here on, on a workshop on the initial scope of the plan. We then set out on a pretty aggressive schedule. The council in January designated Pioneer Bluff Transition as a top priority under strategic plan. We committed to getting the plan done by the end of the year, and we hope to still accomplish that with this workshop and adoption next month. We've been to the Planning Commission, we've been meeting with property owners continuously, and we'll, we also just did a presentation of the Chamber of Commerce. We'll be going to EDAC next month, and that's really because of the timing of their meetings. The first one that we could get to was right before the council workshop, or council meeting next month. So when we set out to do this, we really identified four main purposes of this plan. First and foremost, we wanted to analyze the feasibility of deindustrialization and redevelopment. In order to justify, you know, why are we doing this in the first place, we wanted to show that the costs associated with deindustrialization and rebuilding infrastructure there actually matched up, or hopefully were less than the finished value of lots out there, much like we did with the Bridge District. We also wanted to establish a deindustrialization strategy as we got into this, what, what was our strategy, working with existing property owners and businesses. One of the most important things we identified right away was that there are a number of regional projects, big regional infrastructure projects, that affect the future of Pioneer Bluff, the least of which is the McGowan Bridge, that's, that's going to be opening and changing the nature of traffic in the, in the area. The Broadway Bridge is probably the biggest one with the additional connection to Sacramento, and what, what will be the, the impact on Pioneer Bluff development is a, is a big question. West Side Rail relocation is an essential piece of the riverfront, really realizing its full potential. I wouldn't go so far to say that it can't develop, but West Side Rail is a big deal for both the Bridge District and Pioneer Bluff. And then, of course, streetcar, as we think about later phases of streetcar, especially the north-south line, getting, as you'll see through this presentation, getting through Pioneer Bluff has its access and circulation challenges. Streetcar is a big deal for Pioneer Bluff. And then lastly, creating the foundation for a future, potentially specific plan, we're using that term tonight, could take many forms, but the one we're most familiar with is that, but really a land use and infrastructure financing plan. We see the future of this area really needing that. So as we started working amongst our, our staff team, and also working with property owners, we kept coming across these same questions, and wanted to, you know, head off some answers on those right now. First of all, how long is this going to take? I mean, this is a long-term project. We'll, we'll be the first to acknowledge that this isn't going to happen overnight. We do lay out in the plan a fairly aggressive schedule that suggests that in a, in a perfect world, with all the, everything lining up, and a lot of other variables coming together, five to seven years could be the timeframe to get to finish lots, maybe not the whole district, but getting some deindustrialization to occur, and getting infrastructure in place to allow the first development to happen. But yeah, it's a long-term process, and, but I think the key point there is that without a sustained and proactive approach to this, to this effort, we aren't really going to make much progress, and you might as well think, you know, 20 years, 30 years. So that's kind of the point there, is that if we, if we are proactive about it and we keep on it, we really think we can, we can get closer to that five- to seven-year timeframe. Why are we doing this now? That's kind of related to that. We've always planned for this, obviously, with the original general plan and the city council's vision from the very start of the city, that this area would, would eventually transition to mixed-use development. But particularly why it's important now is because of all the alignment of these different things that have happened, really, most recently, with all the, all the projects I just outlined, the McGowan Bridge, the funding for the Broadway Bridge, the list goes on and on. So that's really... So, so that's really why it's, it's, we feel that this area is ripe for this process to start. And then, a question that we keep coming back to is are we competing with the Bridge District of Washington? Adding capacity for urban development in our, within our boundaries, is that a, an act of, you know, competition where we're putting Pioneer Bluff ahead of these areas? And, you know, we really think that the Bridge District of Washington are light-years ahead of Pioneer Bluff. They're really not parallel to each other in that respect. I would argue that Pioneer Bluff's main competition is within the region. It's looking across the river at a place like the docks, the river district, the part that's not deindustrialized. It's really putting Pioneer Bluff in a competitive position against other projects in the region. So when capacity in the Bridge District of Washington, the rail yards, is reached, we want to have Pioneer Bluff be ready to go. And even more so, I'd argue that the competition is statewide. Much, much of the effort that we're going to be undertaking in Pioneer Bluff is going to be heavily dependent on grant funding. We have the new cap and trade programs. If you look at the parallel to the Bridge District, we had Prop 1C. We want Pioneer Bluff to be competitive and ready for those funding sources. And so really, the competition is against every other city in California when you're looking at Pioneer Bluff on that level. And moreover, we've done this. We've done it in the Bridge District. There's some important differences, obviously, between this area and that area. But the point is, we, we learned a lot from the Bridge District, both in terms of how to do things right and how to maybe do things in a different order. We started off really on a, on a land use focus in the Bridge District back in the 90s. And we really got to the mid 2000s when we, we got into the details of deindustrialization, infrastructure financing. So we're trying to flip that on its head, really focusing on Pioneer Bluff first from a economic and really practical standpoint to get into some of the fundamental issues for how to, how to trigger deindustrialization to start happening. So the plan is organized, as you've seen, there's, chapter two is the scope and economics of the deindustrialization and infrastructure. Chapter three is what Rick will cover, that's the specific recommended actions. Those are kind of divided up between short-term, about a one-to-three-year action plan, and then there's some later-year recommendations as well. And then the appendices, particularly Appendix A is a bibliography of all the source documentation. Our consultant and Rick spent a huge amount of time doing what we call due diligence on this project. We really had to understand this area, everything that goes on in it, all the variables that go into things like, you know, replacing the infrastructure. So there was a lot of time spent doing that work, and the appendices are hopefully a representation of that. So the scope really includes a couple of main topics, deindustrialization and, and planning activities. And so the main one is, is business relocation. We, the scope, chapter two of the, of the Transition Plan focuses on opportunities and constraints around the existing businesses that are out there right now. A lot on the tank farms, the courtyard, and some of the other businesses. The scope continues with demolition or environmental remediation costs. We, we did our best to estimate costs for demolishing and remediating the courtyard and some of the other facilities out there. And then interim improvements, you'll hear later tonight on the next item, there's an interim traffic management plan that was prepared. It's really meant to focus on, once the bridge opens, what are the things that we need to do to address safety, right-of-way encroachments, that sort of thing. So the scope in the, in the Transition Plan reflects that. And also the improvements that were done with the McGowan Bridge. And then reuse planning. We, we anticipate this being a parallel process. We're working on a deindustrialization effort. At the same time, we're starting to work on a specific plan or equivalent document. And at the same time that's going on, there's these regional planning efforts centered around Broadway Bridge, rail relocation, streetcar. The levy easement's a big deal, just because we, we need to know where that line is, much like in the Bridge District, before we can know how much developable property we really have out there. And on infrastructure, the, the scope of work you'll see has pretty good details on the, the types of projects and facilities that Pioneer Bluff is going to need to support urban mixed-use development. So there are those regional projects, but there's also the more local items like internal road circulation. There's a really, we think, a big need to have an additional north-south roadway within, somewhere within Pioneer Bluff, just to address the fact that there's only one north-south facility, and there's not a lot of east-west opportunities to connect to the existing grid. Really, the only one that we see at the moment is at Stone Boulevard, and we did call that out specifically in the plan. And then you have the utilities, you know, much like the Bridge District, what, what kinds of utilities are you going to need to support the type of urban development, and especially the scale the general plan calls for? It's, it's very parallel to the Bridge District in that, in that sense. And parks and open space. We identified in the scope, at least initially, given that we have a narrow piece of land, and it's riverfront, obviously, and so there's a flood easement. We're going to strive to accommodate most of that park and open space within that flood easement area, so that's what the scope reflects. So getting to economics, this is really the core of the, of the plan. We wanted to not, not nail down what the costs were for infrastructure. That's going to come as we do a specific plan. But what we wanted to at least start off with was a, was a good estimate of what all those facilities are going to cost, again, being informed from what we did in the Bridge District, and get to a, a land residual analysis, comparing the costs both at the, at the parcel level and then the regional costs that are necessary to transition Pioneer Bluff. And then looking at the, the value of finished lots in that district as a comparison to see, are we upside down? If we're, if we're way upside down, then you kind of have to go back to the why are we doing this now question. What we found through our analysis, the bottom line is that the land economics tend to justify proceeding with, with more work on this project. And in the plan, there's a, there's a couple of tables that show that. What it comes down to is we have, you know, a huge price tag, $325 million, to realize the full potential, but that includes all those regional projects. About 119 million of those, of those costs are Pioneer Bluff parcel-level costs. And when you compare that to the finished value of lots, it, it is about a break-even scenario. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick. He's going to walk through the action plan.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, council. My, my piece will be brief here. This chart shows a seven-year time period that is tailored to the best-case timeframe for, in the deindustrialization that, that Aaron alluded to earlier. But I'm going to focus on the next three years and how staff recommend spending the existing $1.75 million budget allocation that we have to expedite and facilitate transition. So you can see that we have two primary activities here, deindustrialization and planning coordination. And, and the tasks associated with those are primarily foundational in nature, negotiating, outreach, assessment, et cetera. So the early actions that we want to get started on right away in 2015 involve traffic issues. And, and we took a first step, at least on the first item, of resolving the, the ethanol-by-rail issue at the Planning Commission a few weeks ago. As we mentioned, or Aaron, Aaron mentioned earlier, we'll be talking about the South River Road Traffic Management Plan tonight separately, as a, as a separate agenda item. And we do propose to resolve some of the major right-of-way encroachment issues via short-term license agreements with the property owners. And moving on to courtyard relocation, this is one of our major recommendations in the plan. We'll be spending a lot of time on this, subject to your approval, in 2015, securing a relocation site, and then proceeding with the planning to design that new facility with a goal of breaking ground in 2017. So we'll be spending a lot of time, hopefully, in, in negotiations with, with the fuel terminals, Buckeye Shell and, and by association, Kinder Morgan. And the other major business relocation that I would, that I would call out tonight is with Clark Pacific, who is the major property owner. About 20% of the property in Pioneer Bluff is owned by Clark Pacific. Excuse me, this is a little touchy. We'll be spending time as well, planning for demolition and remediation, particularly with the, the city's courtyard and wastewater treatment plant property and with the, with the fuel terminals. And we do recommend bringing on an environmental consultant early in 2015 to help us with assessment and strategic planning. And finally, the, the planning coordination piece of this, we'll be working with our own planning department on the general plan update and changes to the zoning ordinance, and then integrating with the, with the regional projects that, that Aaron discussed. So on, on flood protection, rail relocation, and the Broadway Bridge. And another strong recommendation on the flood protection piece is to engage a consultant early in 2015 to help us define the levy prism, which will in turn determine the development setback line. And that's, that's going to be a key piece to figure out how much property we have to work with at the end of the day. So I think that's my piece. The rest of this is really longer-term planning and financial stuff, with Aaron's going to wrap up.
So on, on the long-term financial plan, we did mention in the, in the actual Transition Plan about IFDs, infrastructure finance, this is kind of the core of the city's strategy going forward for financing infrastructure and redevelopment. The EIFD in particular is going to be relevant to Pioneer Bluff as we, as we see it, the regional costs in particular. These are big projects that are, have citywide benefit and, and impact. The IFD is a, is a perfect mechanism for helping finance some of those costs, but it's also a good mechanism for funding some of the local costs. So we, we are recommending, as the city gets into planning for the, for the EIFD during 2015, which we're going to be spending a lot of time on there, that a lot of these regional costs and a basic strategy of allocating tax increment from other parts of the city to those regional projects that affect Pioneer Bluff will really go a long way to advancing the development of this district. And then, like I already talked about, the preparation of a land use and the infrastructure plan. What we did include so far was in, in the last page of the Transition Plan, a set of reuse principles and assumptions that we thought should go into that plan as, as the council starts thinking about it. And the last one I'll mention is consider the Stone Lock area. The Stone Lock area is just to the south of Pioneer Bluff. Aside from the, the boundaries in our mind, there's really a lot of reasons to think of them as a, as a one-development site. We control the property to some respect. It was a form of redevelopment agency property. But just in the, in the aspect of, of infrastructure, we have obviously some major costs on our own courtyard on South River Road. And spreading those costs by adding land that is, doesn't have the same challenges that some of the lots in Pioneer Bluff have, could go a long way to enhancing that residual land value. So it's a suggestion at this point. I think we're going to get into the planning process next year, and we'll, we'll determine if that really makes sense. But it's something that jumped out at us as we were preparing the plan. And just really quickly on the budget, we, we did allocate 1.5 million for this effort in the CIP update this year. That, and we anticipate that will cover the costs of the traffic management plan, if that's approved tonight. A lot of the courtyard relocation planning costs, the, the environmental consultant and flood survey consultant contracts we plan on issuing at the beginning of next year, and then other activities. And then, and then we also got a grant from the Strategic Growth Council, it's a planning grant. We awarded that in July of 2014. It's, it's sort of specific on how we use that funding, but we, we see it as a way to pay for some of those consultant contract costs and also starting the process towards a specific plan. So that's the presentation. I did want to take just a moment to acknowledge the team that worked on this plan. We did have, of course, Rick and Tom, who did most of the heavy lifting, I'll say. But we had a multi-departmental team associated with it. Almost every department was involved. And in particular, Charlene Hamilton, Katie Jacobson, David Tilly, and Mike Lucan were instrumental in putting all the information together and, and getting the plan done. So as a team, we're here to take all your questions and comments. Thanks.
Questions?
I've got a couple of stuff. So, so this is really from the silos to the port.
It's from the Pioneer Bridge at the north end, down to the Stone Lock area initially, but we are, you know, throwing in that additional consideration of, of thinking of Stone Lock in this context also.
I guess what I've always envisioned, I mean, we've talked about this, I guess, from day one, many, many years ago. And I, I, I think our plan that we developed then, or at least our thoughts that we developed then, they're coming to fruition. They're, they're working. And, I mean, I see things like what's going on along the riverfront. I mean, I had no idea that it would be a baseball park and then, but I did really think that the, the Bridge District would be housing and, and those sort of things. And as we moved on forward, for me, it's always been let the market really sort of dictate what's going on, what's transpiring, how it's moving. And, and the market is doing that. I think that those properties today are worth more than they were 20 years ago. So I, I guess the question I have is, are we trying to, are, are we trying to skew the market? Are we trying to do something that is going to really take a lot longer? Because I don't know if the property values today, we'll, we'll say at, at some of the, the major points that, that you're looking at. You're looking at the tank farms, and you're looking at various places. Is that property today worth enough so that the property owner would take it down and put up the kinds of things that we're looking for as far as condos or whatever else they may be? Is the value increasing enough so that we can do that?
Let me, let me try to answer the best I can. I think looking at the Bridge District again is a parallel to that. You're right that, that in the Bridge District, the, the market is now responding, and it's, it's taking care of itself on those finished lots. But we have to remember that to get to that point, to get to that tipping point where the private market responded, it took years of, of public planning and investment. You know, the, the sum of the, of the $65 million that went into infrastructure in the Bridge District, about, I think, half of it at least was public money in one form or another. And, and I think in Pioneer Bluff, what we're trying to do is not, is not force the market to respond. But we, what we are trying to do is implement the vision by adding investment to the area and, and doing planning work that will help that along to a point where the market will, will take a, a close look at the economics of, of the properties that are out there and say, well, maybe, maybe the highest and best use for this property isn't what it is today, a tank farm, or whatever, whatever have you. And I think you're, you're seeing that on, on, on some examples with CEMEX. You know, obviously, there was a relocation agreement that was associated with it, but, and there's other properties. There are a few properties in Pioneer Bluff that have been purchased by private property owners. And, and with our own property, with the courtyard, I think we've come to that realization that we're so constrained that this doesn't make sense here anymore. There is a higher and better value here. So, so we have to start the process by, with the planning and the, and the initial investment. Again, not, not trying to force anything to happen, but to help it along to the point where we get to where we were in the Bridge District 10 years ago.
How many people will be affected with the transition?
Well, I think, you know, that's a complicated answer. I think we have, we have a number of employees that work for the, the businesses. I know one of these guys has the total sum of employees.
It was 900, including, you know, truck drivers. The major employer is Clark Pacific at about half of that, when they're really busy, like they're today.
But I think, I think adding to that, you know, we see stakeholders in this area as not just being the, the businesses and the employees that are there, but also, you know, the, the city. We have a, we have a, a vision for a unified, you know, complete riverfront with, with river access and recreational opportunities. And Pioneer Bluff goes a long way to completing that vision. And so I think we look at some of the, of the, the whole there, the stakeholders are not just the people that are there today, but also the opportunity for what will be in the future, so.
Well, I understand. I guess one of the things is, is I just, I don't want to be so heavy-handed that we're not compassionate as far as, as the people are concerned. I mean, we've had one issue already that, quite frankly, I was not very happy about. And we lost a number of employees that went to Woodland. We had no, that should not have happened. We, we could have finessed that, I think, much better than we did, but we didn't. And I just want to make sure those kinds of things don't continually surface, and I, I want to be fairly compassionate about it. I mean, I think that the area is in transition. Now, whether it can be five to seven years as far as transition goes, I'm not so sure. It may be a little, it may be longer than that. But at the same time, we want to build in enough compassion so that we can, in essence, work with the work with the business and businesses, work with the people and, and all of those kinds of things. So anyway, that, those were some of the comments I had.
Yeah. To me, I, I think we need to be cautious about the bridge district analogy. I think it's powerful. It reminds us of what we can accomplish and why, and why the citizens of the community so strongly support their conversion and the transformation of Pioneer Bluff and have for 25, 30 years. But it was a different place. And we, I think we, we, we think we did more there than we did, or we did, we did what we did for different reasons. It isn't as though the market just has transitioned the bridge district. Left to its own devices, the bridge district would look very similar today as it did 15 years ago. What happened in the bridge district was a combination of Rayleigh Field forcing the issue, right? A large property owner taking out the largest business in that area, the State Box Company at the time, right? That we didn't, State Box didn't want, they weren't asking to leave, you know, that, none of that was happening. That project required all hands on deck. We have 14 months to open a stadium. We'll, we'll do whatever we need to in order to make that happen. So we didn't make decisions at that time around, you know, how do we make sure that we're preserving the existing arrangements? And then it required a massive infusion of public funds, mostly not ours, from the state bond program in order to increase value and make development happen in a way that wouldn't have otherwise worked. Because property owners and it's, you know, I, I own my house, I, I get it. For, for all these property owners, the, the, the most effective, the smartest strategy is to say, I want to continue doing the business I'm doing now. Do not disturb me in any way. Call me when everyone else has developed their property so that the value of my property has gone up by five or 10 times. And then when that happens, give me a subsidy to relocate my business to somewhere else. That's a perfectly rational commercial real estate approach to take. That's not in the public interest. And it doesn't work. It's a, it's a classic tragedy of the commoners problem. If everyone does that, the values never increase. If, if, if it weren't for Rayleigh Field, because everyone was doing that back then. Nobody wanted to build anything in Rayleigh Field. They were waiting for the value to be right. But the value doesn't get right until somebody starts building. And so the, this is the challenge, right? So the, the, it's, it's, is, is, are we trying to build the market, are we waiting for the old market to work? Are we waiting for the new market to work? And the answer to me is, it's going to be both at the same time. This is what, the other way, I think the, the bridge district example is not exactly on point. The bridge district could not be incrementally developed in part because before Rayleigh Field, there was no sewer and water. There was the rail line, right? It was either, in some ways, it was like all or nothing. And so we needed a master plan. We needed finished lots. And the words that you're using are like, we need the whole thing, like all scoped out and planned and most of the major improvements in, because nothing could happen until that occurs. That is not the case here, right? We are, we already know that because, you know, a furniture store has already opened up, right? That was, we had no plan to have, but somebody said, look, there's a ton of cars going by here every day. We have this property and there's a frontage here, so we want to start selling some mattresses. Someone else says, oh, there's this other piece of property over here, I want to turn it into, in a brew pub because there's a million people coming by here and it's going to get even more when the Broadway Bridge and the McGowan Bridge and South River Road are improved. So those market, the market is already biting at this in a way that it could not bite in the bridge district. Because the bridge district required such significant overwhelming infrastructure improvements for any project to happen. That isn't the case here. So the, even the implementation plan, which I think has this very methodical master plan developer approach, which is we're going to spend, you know, a couple, a couple of years scoping and a couple of years that, that's great, but there are people who are looking at these properties right now to make changes on. So, and, and, and we ought to be enabling that to occur and recognizing that the, that the vested interest of the existing, of the incumbent property owners is to, is to, is exactly what I said before, which is to maximize the, the property profit by continuing what you're doing now while still allowing all the industrial activities to occur and then wait for everyone else to improve the value of the land. There's nothing nefarious about that. That's what, that's what I would do too, but that's not the public's interest. We have to take, we have to take the actions that make the whole district, the whole district move forward. So I do think the bridge district piece, it's, it's informative, but we shouldn't get, get carried away with it. The other lesson to me from that is that not everything has to move simultaneously. So I, the, you know, the tank farms, to me, I'm, I'm still, that's still an open question. I mean, it's not clear to me that it's required in the first few years for them to move. So in terms of like being in negotiations, I've been in negotiations in one way or another with the tank farms for 15 years. Whether or not that's essential, I'm, I certainly think we should be open to them, but there, it's, I don't know that it's, it's required for us in order to move forward with other developments in the district. It's not like they're spewing out smoke and, and there's chemicals going everywhere. It's not, they're not, and, I mean, I would not put a preschool right next door necessarily, but it's not, it's not such a nuisance that no one else can develop because we're already seeing that occur. And so thinking about both how we look at this district as a whole, which is what I think you guys have done a great job in doing, while also both allowing and encouraging, you know, development to occur in an incremental, sometimes quirky way that does not assume a master developer sort of rail yard style or even a lead developer, bridge district style, I think will be instructive in terms of, of making, making the change happen. Another piece just on relocation is I really, as we think through, if, and I notice in the, in the cost allocation, a couple of million bucks for $5 million or something for relocation expenses, we, the extent that we're thinking about that, we need to really be programming those, those for first movers only. Or we need to be very clear, you know, we've got a pot of money for, for, for relocation that we're going to set aside. And if you want to relocate in the next, you know, four years, we're, we're, we might be here to help. If you wait until property values reach this level, we're not, we're not, we're not helping anymore. There's a, the point of the relocation is to accelerate and catalyze the change. It's not simply, you know, money to help folks who can already recoup the cost of their relocation through their, through the increased value of their property as a result of its, its potential other, its other development, its other development potential. So I, I, I mean, I think this is really good and I really liked the beginning of it when you laid out the timeline because it reminded me, in addition to the non-conforming use period from 2004, that there's basically been very, very steady progress. You know, you know, there's been a major grant or a major project or a major, you know, relocation or removal, you know, virtually every year since, since 2003 along this. And so there's, in addition to the fact that we've been telegraphing this for 20 years in the general plan, in addition to the fact that the non-conforming use thing took effect a decade ago, we've also been putting our money and our boots on the ground to show, you know, in earnest that this is absolutely for real and imminent ever, ever since. So I, I thought this was really, this was, this is an important step we, that we needed to be taking. We do need to do the, the land use planning, but I think you were, we were, you were smart at this level to say, let's not go to a specific plan and dream until we can get a basic look at the fundamentals of the land economics and the infrastructure. And this is a, a certainly useful start in that respect. Mr. Ledesma?
I would, I can speak more, but then we have somebody wanting to public comment first or?
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Aaron. All right. We had one request for comment by Dan Ramos.
We need the mayor of all the members of city council and Mark and Chris. And Chris, congratulations on being reinstated here. So it's good to have you back on board. We're ready to roll. First, I want to just say, compliment both Aaron and Rick and Tom. Good to see Tom again on this. He's one of the best. We appreciate having him on this, but, and also want to appreciate Dr. Murray. I mean, I know this transition plan was something they said we're going to try to get done by the end of the year here and you're going to do it. So appreciate the effort on this. So speaking personally, I'm here speaking for, for the Ramos family and the properties we have there. And of course, you know, my cousin Kent's back here and they have their property. And John Mitchell Moore's here from Clark Pacific and Dick Cunha told me to speak for him tonight, so here I am. But no, we appreciate this. I want you to know that as property owners, especially, I know the Clark family and ours and we've, we've been advocating this riverfront mixed use, use, I remember back when we did the general plan, roughly first incorporated, let's transfer. So we get it, we're on, we're on board, let's do it. I think, I appreciate all the comments tonight, especially Bill and the sensitivity to us, to his users there. Appreciate the plan. I think we've got a good basis for going forward. Completely agree with the mayor with your comments in terms of, there's, I think, the ability to get this thing started more and, and work around the tank farms a little bit. Two general comments. One of them is that we talked about learning lessons from the bridge district. And I remember the bridge district, early on when, when Peter McEwen and we kind of got the first specific plan going, we had the Portland planners here. Boy, we were dreaming big and we wanted this to be downtown Sacramento and we, and we came up with a great plan and we revised that plan a little bit later on. I got a minute and a half ago here, sorry, I have to go fast. And, but one of the things that I noticed here, we, the Pioneer Bluff, it's important as we move into this is that, you know, we found we, in the, in the bridge district, we had the, you know, 3.0 FAR, the two, you know, I think it's 2.0 average, and it drives a lot of cost for infrastructures. And that's a market, we're doing good with our residential, but, you know, those big office users, we're thinking we're going to get, I mean, this office market is very flat in Sacramento. We don't know what's really going there, but I think it's important and, and when it hasn't been mentioned here is that we really look at the market we're after here in this area. It's a wonderful area. It's got tremendous amenities, I think with, obviously with the riverfront there and, and the ability of the streetcar and stuff, but there's a lot of innovation centers that are being planned now in a lot of communities. We're in a great spot between Davis and Sac State in terms of, you know, what really, what is our market? I think we have our next economy plan out there. It talks about what we're trying to attract here. We should really focus in on, well, we can make this a unique community. I remember two, three years ago, four years ago, we had that one student from Berkeley that came and did that plan. And it was an integrated innovation park is what it was. And those aren't necessarily, you know, 15-story buildings or 10-story buildings. They're collaborative, they're campus-like and the residential's mixed in. It's a real, I think it's kind of development I think this community deserves. And I think we have a real chance at it because we, we're different than anywhere else in the region in terms of having that river there as an amenity. So I'm babbling on here. If I have one more, one, on a more specific thing in Bill's point, some of us landowners, as we transition, especially the ones with the properties right up next to the, to the old companies, I know you guys are, the efforts have been there, the negotiations trying to do it. And I agree with Chris, that's going to take its time and happen. But one of the things that happens with, in terms of our policies now is that as, is we cannot, you know, in, you know, the grandfather uses, you cannot intensify the use, can't add on, can't put building permits, can't do anything, but you can have an industrial tenant there.
I know, I know you're trying, but if you can.
Okay. Just wrapping up is that, just as we look at the policies for transitions that as new tenants or say a tenant leaves, a new tenant comes in, if the, if it can not have to be subject to a conditional use permit, but a clear and a very thorough review by staff at the zoning administrative level in terms of that use qual, you know, being qualified, it just makes that so much easier. Waiting 90, 120 days for a use permit for a tenant, it won't happen. And now we're getting constrained more with the way that we're going to do the road and you'll hear about that a little bit. But that would be, I have great faith in Charlene and David to kind of be able to check that off so we can actually have users there that meet the criteria that the city wants as transition. We're all not trying to do long-term leases there, but.
Dan, I got to go.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, so we'll have a chance to discuss it with staff. Anyway, they've done a great job. So thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so Ms. Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, as, as we just heard, I think we were presented with a very thoughtful pathway forward. I think very important kind of planning, planning work and benchmarks that, that have been put in place here. So I'm grateful to the, the team that, that's done this work. I think it, it pushes the, the important strategic vision forward in this area. I think as the, the mayor mentioned, I think there's a tension, a concern about getting impatient. And I think, I think we all are impatient to move, move things forward and, and that we may see kind of clunkier, as you mentioned, quirky growth and it's not going to be linear. So I think we'll have to be open, open to that as it, as it's coming forward, although it's really important to have a clear, a clear plan. I think when we actually open up the bridge and the community, it's kind of, as we know, a hidden place. So we all know about this plan. We all know that it's there. And I, I think people with the, the demolition are starting to say, oh, what's over, what's over there? And people may be turning on 15th to get a shortcut on, onto the Pioneer Bridge, maybe are looking to their right, but when they actually will pass through, I think that will be, we'll have an important, important time to tell the community and to share, share the vision. So I appreciate that this timing is so perfect in terms of having, being able to tell, tell the story and share with our community what, what's happening there. It'll be so much more visible in just a month. So again, thanks for the, the work.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to staff for putting together this plan in, in the timeframe we, we, you said you would. So, and, which is amazing. We talked about this about a year ago. You had said, oh, we're going to do it next year. And how we do it, I, I don't know. So you guys amazed me that you're able to put this together. So thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Rick, for all your work on this. And it is really a, you know, a year ago when, when, or whenever it was when we, the McGowan Bridge came upon us, like a mannequin from heaven just going to drop down so that we can, we can get this bridge. And all of a sudden, I remember the, the, the council meeting we had about us, all of a sudden we started scratching our head, oh, we got to think about roads, we got to think about X and Y. And then we, we started talking with the business owners out in the area and it just, all of a sudden this became very real. And so when I'm, when reading through the, the plan, it's suddenly, you're right, there is some linear, linearness, I guess that's the word, to it. We can manage it in a very sort of project management sort of way. We're going to get through these five steps. But I'm, but, but I think what, to, to council member Sandin's point and the mayor's point about what will probably actually happen, there, it will be sort of organic. We are working on this, a lot of this already. And, you know, in comparison to the bridge district and having been in the planning commission in that time period, you know, there was, there, there were certain things that I, I recall that, 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 that sort of brought that whole bridge district together. And the mayor's right, it was Rayleigh Field and a couple of other issues that sort of all of a sudden forced that issue. And I remember my meeting with Val Toppenberg at the time, just talked about, all of a sudden, it opened up a sort of path that can go, that, that the business owners agreed to. But, you know, the part that will be challenging about this is, and the part that is, the challenge to us is our ability to be very, the ability to, to adapt really quickly to an opportunity. So what the bridge district also had was a redevelopment agency that allowed staff to kind of work on things for some time without getting a permit and being able to fund the activity for another five years or whatever, if ever. We didn't, and it, it had some other, we were in flush times a little bit in the city. We had more staff than we certainly have today. So I'm, I'm always thinking about these things happening in the context. And not only did you have a bridge district and all these sort of private investor things, you also had a context where the city government was a lot different. And so our role is much different today. And I, so I'll read this more as a blueprint to, to, to get to a point in the bridge district where you can be reactive and say, okay, we're going to work on this opportunity. But there is some basic stuff that we are getting. And not only do we get, I want to go back to the bridge district having redevelopment agency, also we fell upon a 1C funding, it was about 21, 22 million, I want to say it is, that helped put in that backbone infrastructure. I don't know if that's going to come again, but we need to be, I think what got us that, that, that funding years ago was we were ready for it. So it is important that we get some, we have some approach so that should another opportunity like that come, we need to be ready for it. So I, I'm glad that the business owners represented by Mr. Ramos today on the, the landowners out there kind of get to the point that, yeah, this is happening. It's no longer about, well, it's another five years off before we even start it. I think we're all in agreement now. We are at a very important point and we're moving forward because what I read into this is the, our ability to, to get our collective selves aligned so that when those opportunities come, I mean, we only budget ourselves for, not only, it's a lot of money, 1.5 million dollars to work on something that we won't, the tangible part about that, what, street improvements, safety along the street and lines and some other, I'm going to write down all the notes, but, but it gets us so far. But those things will allow us to, again, if something comes up nine months from now, 10 months from now for a, a bond or some other opportunity, I think this plan kind of gets us a little more ready where we can shift things around a little bit and say, okay, here's our opportunity. Who knows, maybe the tank farms will suddenly decide, well, it's time for us to move. We, we have some sort of context to sort of push the peas around the plate and say, okay, now we can move this and, and kind of move forward. So I'm, I'm, this has been an interesting and very fruitful exercise for us to at least contemplate what it would go like. But again, the, the linearness of it, we just need to make sure we're always, to me, I want to make sure we are agile, we can adapt, and we kind of understand on the bigger and we kind of understand on the bigger price. Which is why I kind of went to your last page, which is the principles of it, of kind of how you implement, which I think is just as important as any other page you have in here, about what it is we're driving towards. So, again, I kind of applaud that page, where you kind of line out things to keep in mind. And your last point, I think, was on the thinking about the Pioneer Bluff. I think that was one of your points in there, thinking about the, I'm sorry, the stone locks as part of this. I think that's important. How can, I don't want to use the deep water channel as we accuse other parts of the region, the city. It isn't a wall. It's people, starting in a month, people will be crossing there quite frequently, and Southport will be connected to an urban district for all intents and purposes. So, I think that's an important point. So, anyway, this is great. And so, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro temp, Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so, so just in general, I think Aaron and Rick and team, good job on getting this together. I know we were looking for this for quite a while. But, it's, it's, I think it's good now because we really have more of an articulated vision of at least what we would like to see happen in this district. So, I guess the, the main issue is going to be when the transition occurs, and I think you did a good job at pointing out that we really don't know. We've got an aggressive schedule to do certain things, but really, in the end, it's going to be market-driven, and I think you're right, and particularly that district is going to be more regional than, than, you know, than tied to the Bridge District. So, I think there's a number of things, you know, in my view, Bridge District is really kind of going to be the name of the game during this cycle. We'll probably see some other, I think what we can do is plan for this area, which is good, to try and help this transition move along. But, you know, we, I'm concerned that we don't suck the air, make sure we don't suck the air out of the Bridge District, as we do, particularly for the higher density stuff. And really make sure that that's, that's where the focus is going to be for that. And then, since we really don't know how long this is going to take, to really look at how can we preserve economic development in the area. And I think, you know, one of the comments, there are existing landowners there that, you know, if the transition occurs, say 10 years, say 15 years, well, you have, have to still occupy your property. You want to make sure there's tenants in there. You want to make sure you don't have vacancies occurring, and blight's going to occur, which is going to hurt the property value. So, to really help support at least a continued use as the use is right now. And I think one of the comments was this permitting process, you know, to make sure that, you know, I would think if the use is intensive or less than existing uses, that this isn't going to be a drawn-out planning commission issue, because I think it's more ministerial at that point. We've made the policy decision, and we're not shutting down businesses. I think what we're doing is we're going through a transition. So, you know, it'd be a shame to put folks that are looking at, you know, just filling space with the same densities or less, to have to deal with the expense and the time of having to, you know, and just going to the planning commission, which I think is great if there's a policy consideration, but I don't think that's really a policy issue on these, you know, depending on these license renewals. The, you know, in terms of the densities and what we're looking at that, you know, again, these things take a long time, and I, I'm certainly with, with my colleagues here, we need to move this. And it's great that we can provide, if we can provide incentives for, for people who want to move, to be able to have the opportunity to do that. You know, I think I'm on the same page with the mayor, that I don't think, you know, tank farms, the movement's going to be a breaker to this. I think, you know, other areas have developed around industrial areas. I think I may have brought up Grand ville Island Bridge Columbia, where they've got a working cement factory right in the middle of this, this area. And it works. It's industrial, but, you know, it's got that industrial vibe, which, you know, I think West SAC really, historically, has got that industrial vibe. So, and it may work, you know, assuming there's not a chemical issue for the residents. But, you know, this, I think it's a good plan. There's going to be some key things, I think, that are going to really dictate how this transition occurs faster. The bridge, for example, I think this north-south line of a streetcar eventually going in, I think it's going to be a game changer in terms of the densities, the property values that would support higher densities. But again, you're probably looking at two or three stories, I would imagine, in that area anyway. Because, you know, you look at cities around the world, even in the Bay Area, that are starting to develop up, they're up three, four stories. So, you don't really have, in most dense areas where there's streetcar service, you don't really have, you don't need to have 10-story skyrisers to support streetcars. So, there's a lot of types of development that we can do that's going to be less than the Bridge District. So, as we move forward, just to, you know, consider that, consider the businesses that are there, be careful about, you know, taking the steam out of the Bridge District. And I know, I know what everybody is. I know that's important to everybody. So, I mean, those are just some comments as you move forward.
I actually, I think in a lot of ways, we already made the decision about the transition and when it's happening. That, I think we, we really don't have the control we think we have to decide that it's five years from now or 10 years from now. If you imagine when the McGowan Bridge and then Village Parkway are complete, what happens on that day, not when just all the cars are going through, but certainly the car, a lot, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of cars going through and being stuck because of truck traffic, trucks turning, trucks entering and exiting, we won't have very much flexibility for very long, once that starts to occur. I mean, just, I mean, this room will be packed with, with commuters. Once moms and dads start deciding that they're going to walk their, take a walk with their kids, you know, up to the waterfront, from Southport up the Pioneer Bluffs, up the new street, and it becomes the, it will be, the preferred bike route for, for the city, north-south, that will dramatically change the, who's looking at, who thinks they own that area, and what we think. Because, it's not so much about the users, it's about the use of the public domain, the public realm there. So that it will be, no, no, the sidewalk and the streets are the publics. And me and my stroller have primacy here, because I live here, right? Me and my bike have primacy here. That change will happen almost instantly. It has everywhere else in the region, it hasn't happened everywhere else in the world. When the Broadway Bridge is complete, then it, and that becomes the center point of access for the state streets, for West Morgues, and for Southport, and to a large extent for the Bridge District, to connect to the other side of the river, that become, I mean, that, that magnifies, I mean, there'll be a lot of people who are just walking across the river and back across that bridge. And so, the public sense of ownership of their space, particularly the public right-of-way, but the public space especially, is going to drive all of, you know, all of this. Our ability to say, no, no, but let's, you know, we should allow, allow it to be the way it was, is going to, is going to be tightly constrained. We're not going to have the level of freedom that we think we have in order to say, well, no, we'll just, you know, take it a little longer. So, I appreciate, I would like to see a district that Clark Pacific, for example, can, you know, which is a major part of our community, a significant employer in our region, one of the, you know, proudest companies, and for all of us in West SAC and in Yolo, could stay there and thrive. And there's no reason it shouldn't, except whether, you know, whether or not it becomes so much of a conflict for them to be able to deal with the fact that the public is reclaiming its public right-of-way on the sidewalks and on the street and in the bike lanes. That's going to be the question. Not so much are we trying to move Clark Pacific? I hope not. I hope they, I mean, we've all been trying to figure out ways from that issue last year that Mr. Kristof was referencing earlier, to help them to, to stay in the, in that location in this community. But, but there's only so much of that that we can control. And so, I think it's less that the market, the real estate market's going to drive the transition, as much as the public of this community, as they begin to take ownership essentially of the, of the right-of-way, is going to dramatically change the operating context for, for several of the businesses that, that currently are, and we'll talk about this in item 11, of course, but that are currently, you know, spilling into that right-of-way in, to, in ways that have been entirely appropriate, but that will no longer function with thousands of cars and cyclists and pedestrians and strollers going on through. So...
Do you have sufficient direction and feedback and comments and conflicts and ambiguities, Mr. City Manager? All right. Then we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of South River Road interim traffic management plan. Mr. Lukin.
Hi, Mayor, and councilmembers. Just in case you may have forgotten, this is Mike Lukin's last item officially as a West Sacramento C staff member.
Oh, that's right.
So, let's, let's draw this one out.
Great, great.
Well, thank you.
And congratulations, Mike.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my, my last 15 years here with the city. Many ways, you felt like a family to me, and helped me through tough times and good times, and I really appreciate everything that you've done for me. So, with that all...
You've made a huge difference in our city, Mike, and both, you know, in the, in the physical landscape, and the health of our community, the economy of our city, the circulation of our community, the rescuing of the port, but also just in the morale and the, and the energy and the intensity and the talent of our organization, you know, everyone throughout, we know, we know this, and we don't work here every day, how much, how valued and, as a colleague and a friend you are by so many people in City Hall, and how much you add to the organization. So, you've done a fantastic, you've made a huge contribution here in our city. And you'll only be, I mean, you'll still be with us, because the Ohio County Transportation District, we're a member of. So, now you just have to work for Mr. Ledesma. But congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. And as you said, Mayor, the best part is I still get to work on projects like the streetcar and other, other things, and continue my service for West Sacramento. So, tonight, as was identified by Aaron and Rick, with item 11 here, you have before you kind of the first implementation item of the, of the Pioneer Bluff transition plan. And this is part of a process that started, as we've talked, with the McGowan Bridge being initiated for construction with a bid in 2013. And, and, you know, really, the face of traffic movement throughout, throughout this area, this eastern part of the city is going to change substantially, and as the mayor said, almost immediately. And so, the, the item that we have before you tonight is really part of a, a series of traffic improvements that started, is starting with the bridge. We'll include some, some items here tonight, but then we'll continue as we go through the specific plan process, as we go through the general plan update process, and as we go through the update of our traffic model on a citywide basis. You'll be seeing, coming before you, additional traffic improvements beyond what you see here tonight. The first set of improvements, you've saw, you've seen already with McGowan Bridge project. You, you have not only the bridge itself, but you have the traffic signals, the three, the three traffic signals, which were mitigation measures for the, for the, for the bridge itself. And then, those will continue on with, with things like widening of, of the road as, as appropriate for the densities that will be determined with a specific plan. And then, other improvements which may come about as a result of the, the South, the Village Parkway, which will be coming before you in the next coming years. So, here is a kind of a chronology of, from a traffic standpoint, of how we got to where we're at here tonight with these recommended improvements. Again, mentioning the approval of the McGowan Bridge. On, in May of last year, you, or this year, you authorized us to pursue some traffic management plan for South River Road. We then moved into utilizing our on-call traffic engineering services contracts. In this case, we chose one of our five consultants, and actually the consultant that is actually working on our traffic model update for the general plan, DKS Associates, to commence the preparation of the South River Road traffic management plan. Tonight, we're here to present this to you, and then we'll begin, begin the need for this with the McGowan Bridge opening on December 5, 2014. Excuse me. After 15 years, I'm still not used to this, the mouse thing. So, the proposed improvements that we have here tonight, and I'm not going to go through every single one of these, but just in summary, they're broken into a number of, grouped into a number of areas. One is parking and entrance improvements. You know, we're moving from a, as we talked, as was discussed earlier, from an area which was designed for industrial development, where you had use of the right-of-way, both for parking and for entrances, as entrance and exiting of those businesses along that route, to where, when we open the bridge on, on December 5, there is a potential for 10 times the traffic that we have today. And that will probably occur, most likely, in busy rush hour times, when possibly there's a blockage of Jefferson Boulevard. People will utilize Locks Drive, the new, the new former, new name for the former South River Road, to cut through and over to, over to the bridge. And then, we'll really ramp up when we open up Village Parkway in a couple years. And again, we're going from, you know, 900 cars to 9,000 cars a day utilizing that roadway. And no longer can we have, unfortunately, parking that is backing up into the roadway. We can't have a million different entrances in and out of these businesses. And so, these improvements, these interim, interim, if you will, improvements today, are things that are going to better define where those parking areas are, improve those, you know, improve that parking and keep that parking safe for those businesses. Sinage is the second item, which is, right now, there are, the area is utilized quite a bit for stopping and queuing for truck traffic in the area. Unfortunately, that is something that will not work with 9,000 cars a day going up and down this roadway. We'll also add greater, a greater amount of speed limit signage. There's literally only one sign out there today, and because there'll be a lot more people on this roadway, we'll have to add to that as well. K-Rail installation, we have a particular user on this road, the Buckeye facility, where because of its location along the right-of-way, it is prudent to protect that business and to protect that infrastructure that is there, in there today with a very simple technology, and that is the use of K-Rail, something you see all over town for construction projects, and putting that in the, the right-of-way adjacent to their facility, frankly, utilizing K-Rail that was, that is being left over from the McGowan Bridge project to, to, to help protect that facility on an interim basis. Then we move into the last bit of things, which is, you know, we do have truck traffic. We have slow-moving truck traffic on South River Road, and that's going to continue for quite some time. And DKS and city staff feel that it's prudent to immediately install some temporary CMS signage, you know, warning users that there is truck crossing occurring on South River Road. You know, the days of where you put up a flashing beacon, a yellow beacon, that nobody pays attention to after it blinks, you know, every time you're on the road, are gone, and we need to put something up that people notice. And so, the first temporary thing that we'll do before the bridge opens on December 5, is we're recommending installing this, the CMS sign, changeable message signs, the ones that you saw with Fix 50 and other projects around town, to be implemented on a temporary basis. And then, moving toward a permanent system that will actually detect slow-moving trucks, particularly in the area around the tank farms, and will warn vehicle, or warn vehicles utilizing the roadway that there is slow-moving truck traffic. Again, the same methodology, that we don't want to put a constantly flashing beacon out there that people get used to. We want something that really warns them when they needed, they need to be warned, warned, excuse me. And then, we built in a contingency of approximately 10%, which brings us to a recommended estimated cost for these interim improvements of $158,213. We think that that's a, a good prudent investment to help not only residents that are traveling through that area when the bridge opens, but also to protect the businesses that are out there today that have been part of our community for a long time. What I'd like to do now is just kind of go through some of the, the work that was done. Still can't get it. There we go. And just to illustrate some of the work in different areas that we've talked about, this is, this is the Clark Pacific area, and we're working with Clark Pacific, as we are with a number of the other property owners. Rick is, has done a great job in interacting with them and being our conduit to, to discuss these items with property owners. But in this case, we're looking at realigning this, this parking along South River Road to put it in a, a, more of a diagonal style, adding some striping, adding some curbing, and some other things, really, to make that, when, when those cars go in and out of that facility, to make that more safe. This is a indication of the K-Rail that I mentioned earlier, along the area where Buckeye's facility is, really protecting the, the infrastructure that's in place there now. We actually have had incidences in the past where cars have, have penetrated that fence line, and it has not been, and we, we need to protect that area. It's probably the most vulnerable area along there, that area, in terms of the tank farms' infrastructure. And we'll be working closely with Buckeye to, to implement this, and as well as the entrances, excuse me, the entrances and exits for their vehicles. We've left enough room in the recommendation tonight, so where we can work with them and, you know, tweak the location of this K-Rail and the entrances to meet their needs.
Mike, can I just answer you on that one, in particular?
Sure.
Does the K-Rail come all the way to the edge of the vehicle lane, or will it, as, since we're going to be encouraging cyclists to be using this new bridge and all of this, so we can anticipate a bunch of them are going to be on there, will this, at this location, will they be essentially expected to enter the lane of traffic?
Frankly, since we've, we've put this out, there has actually, we've actually got some comment back from a number of folks, not really the bicycle community, but we've, we've thought about that and kept that in mind. Where we're probably going to make a little bit of an adjustment with this one, for, for that reason and some other reasons. So, and again, the recommendation gives us the flexibility to do that, so you're not setting in stone that's the exact location tonight. And then, lastly, this may be a little difficult to read. This is the, the concept for the, we call a driver feedback system for slow trucks. We would have a warning device approximately in the curve, or a detection device, excuse me, that would be approximately in that curve, that would... me, that would be approximately in that curve, that would detect vehicles in that area, and then would send a wireless electronic message to a reader board that would warn them of, not only their speed, but would also warn them of trucks crossing ahead. And again, we think this is a better system than the standard system of flashing lights. People will notice this. This will be very bright LED-style signage, you know, tastefully in size, but something that people are going to notice and not get used to it being on all the time. The last thing I wanted to mention, which is actually not part of the $158,000, but part of the plan, if you will, and funded by the bridge project itself, is we also, under construction right now, is a turnaround, and that is just south of the intersection of the final signal, signalized intersection with Clark Pacific. And in this area, we've created a truck turnaround. This is currently under construction, not necessarily to be a turnaround for all vehicle traffic, but one of the parts of the signage I failed to mention is that we're going to be having warnings for trucks that, as they get down to the southern part of South River Road, that, you know, the truck route ends in 1,000 feet, the truck route ends in 500 feet. But, in the event, in the event that they don't heed those signages, we have to have a place for those trucks to turn around. And so, we've created this expansion of the roadway here, which will be open in time for the bridge, for a truck to turn around. We're not going to mark it as a turnaround point, but it is an emergency turnaround, if you will, that will allow trucks to make a safe turn. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. A more complete summary of the interim measures for South River Road is contained in the staff report. John Long with DKS, his associates, is here tonight, as well as myself, to answer any questions you might have.
Terrific. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Mayor Protem Johannesen.
Yeah, Mike. So, on the, on 15th Street going to South River Road currently, I mean, that's the commute I go to in the morning. People queue up in the center lane, basically, to make the left turn to go on to the freeway.
Correct.
15. So, it happens, when that line gets long, people take the right-hand lane, go south on South River Road, do a U-turn, and come back through the stop sign, go on to South River Road. So, they're basically cutting through the line that way, which, you know, with a lot of traffic, not a lot of traffic now, it's not that big a deal. I'm not, I don't know if it's double-yellow there or whatever, but with more traffic coming through there, that's going to continue to be an issue. So, what are you having in mind? I know there's a signal going in right there.
Yeah, so that turning movement that you just mentioned is not legal, and, although a lot of people are doing it, and again, another part of this plan is...
He was asking for a friend.
Yes. Well, a big part of this interim traffic plan is enforcement, and we've been working very closely with the police department, who will, beginning with the opening of the bridge, be looking at a much higher level of enforcement for this area, because really, you can do a lot of different stuff, but you can't protect against the person breaking the law. And so, you know, probably, you know, for the first interim period, the police department will probably issue, you know, some warnings and help people, and will try to use city lights and some other things to educate people that making these types of turns is not a good idea. But, in the end, you know, if they speed, if they make turning movements that are not allowable, they will be cited by our police department, and unfortunately, that's a hard way to learn those things.
I haven't looked at the entrances of the business lawn there, but, you know, even like the cement islands, that would be a deterrent as well, as far up south that you can go. But I think, there may be driveways that are fairly close to that.
Yeah, with the existing infrastructure out there and the existing roadway with, you know, I think you saw, quite a few years ago, when we planned the original McGowan Bridge, you know, we had a robust construction program for medians and right-of-way expansion, and, you know, we'll have to look at that through the specific plan process and the general plan update, but we'll get there at some point. We just lack both the right-of-way and, frankly, the funding to do those types of things at this point in time.
Okay.
So, we're trying to kind of manage with limited resources with this.
Mike, is this, the interim plan is, what's the interim period? Interim until full improvement, or interim?
Interim through opening of Village Parkway.
Okay.
With the caveat that when we do the environmental document for Village Parkway, there may be some additional improvements that are needed.
Yeah, it seems like, so, okay, so, this interim plan is up to the opening, or includes the opening of Village Parkway? It seems like, these seem like effective measures for the opening of the McGowan Bridge.
They absolutely are.
I'm a little more skeptical that they would work enough for the whole, when there's, everyone's going this way.
They absolutely are. We'll accommodate the McGowan Bridge opening. We're still going through the design of Village Parkway, and we'll still have to do an environmental document and a traffic study associated with that. We think that it will accommodate that, but it's, we'll have to be back to you again to give you any recommendations of things that we might have to do to enhance that. Now, the traffic study that was done for the bridge anticipated Village Parkway opening up, and so, those traffic signals in there were, are an example of things that we had to plan for, keeping in mind that Village Parkway was going to open up. So, we plan for that future development, but I just don't want to give you a too-definite answer that when we finalize those environmental documents for Village Parkway, there may be a little, you know, a need for a little bit of change.
Yeah, I mean, just, I know the Bridge District's a tired example, but when we did all that infrastructure and the queuing at 15th began, and the conflicts with the rail line, and the expectation by citizens that we would instantly solve rail, but also a lot more scrutiny on, okay, why does the train need to be, you know, doing that so often and for so long and all that? It dramatically increased the amount of public and media and legal scrutiny, folks who want to file a lawsuit or whatever, and you can definitely see that occurring in this area, because I think folks are going to be less, there will be even less understanding of trucks, because they seem like they have more alternatives, right? But, so, one question was on the flip side of that. We've been mainly, at least here, talking about, you know, the impacts of turning trucks and that sort of thing on the automobiles. But what about the flip side? So, this issue that Mr., that Mayor Protem Johannesen raises reminds me, to the extent to which there's significant queuing on this road, because of, you know, there's still only one on-ramp onto South River Road, and you've got, you know, a large amount of Southport coming up this one, as well as folks who are using this to get from Broderick or the Bridge District into Southport to drop off their kids at school and whatever, so a lot of traffic, so a lot of queuing on this road, where trucks may not be able to turn, because there's just a long line of cars all the way down that. Did the analysis look at that, and are there solutions that protect trucks, or will trucks, will the truck traffic simply have to, you know, adjust to commute patterns? What's the thinking around that side of that same conflict?
So, as part of the McGowan Bridge project, we did a traffic study that was prepared by Fair and Peers and Associates, and we did take a look at those items. Our level of service policy is being, you know, amended as part of our general plan update, and you'll be hearing about that next month. But, you know, there is a level, an expectation for a much-increased level of congestion in this area, at least until the Broadway Bridge opens up. So, you know, you are going to see, you know, things move from what may be Level of Service A to Level of Service D and E with these openings, but that was, that was shown in that environmental document, and is, was anticipated in things like the Bridge District specific plan, that we, that the congestion would increase significantly in this area.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just, I just mean, for the, for the industrial, for the existing industrial users, which, who have ingress and egress that won't be at one of the new signals, whether or not, whether or not it is true in the first place, and if so, whether they appreciate that they're, you know, it could be virtually impossible to turn, you know, to turn left because of a long queue of cars.
Correct.
And my experience is they're, they're not very forgiving. Not the industrial users, the cars, of letting me make a left turn, so, if not by a big truck, probably less so. So, okay, so there's, we don't, there's no, we don't have a solution for that, but...
Unfortunately, we don't, except for where we put the signal lights. We tried to put those in places where Clark Pacific and some other trucking companies, where we have a lot of ingress and egress.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, we do have a couple of requests or a public comment on this, and also any other questions at this time from the council? So, the first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Moll of West Sacramento, for the record. And I was just wondering, with this modification of South River Road, and also the further development of that area over there, is that going to call for an immediate or not-too-distant future for expansion of public transit over in that area? Is it going to affect that Number 39 bus route that comes through there, coming over the Pioneer Bridge and so forth? Because Yolo Bus is in the process of revising some woodland routes, but they didn't mention anything about revising any West Sacramento routes, so I thought that might be considered. And also, I noticed, even though they were dated September, I think it was October, that Regional Transit put out a new bus book, and I understand that they're going to be putting out another one in about a year, but we just have the old worn-out books on our Yolo Buses, and even if it's 10 months, I think it would be worth it to have the new bus books on our Yolo Bus, buses, so that our people, riders, would have the most up-to-date information. So, and so, I guess that's the main point of it. And I don't want to sound picky unis, but I noticed the presentation said total estimate cost of $158,213, and is that a cost of just the estimate itself, or are we talking about the estimated total cost? Because usually, the estimate cost is a small fraction of the estimated cost, so...
I think you failed. That did sound a little picky unis to me, Mr. Lowell.
Well, I don't think it's being picky unis. I think, I think it's quite a difference. It can be quite a difference.
Well, on the other issues, I guarantee you, we will, we will convey your suggestions with respect to Line 39 to the Deputy Director of Yolo Bus and the Yolo County Transportation District. Thanks, Mr. Lowell. Brayden Chadwick?
Hi, good evening. My name's Brayden Chadwick. I represent Buckeye Terminals. Just had a couple of comments on the interim transportation plan. And in the, in kind of the workshop presentation also, there were a lot of words there that need to be reiterated, I think. One of them is outreach, coordination, negotiations. These have been, unfortunately, absent in a large portion of Buckeye's dealings with the city. This interim transportation plan is very similar to that. I do want to thank also, though, Rick Toft. We did meet with Rick and the Fire Department in August, which is, which was good and helpful, because I think that there are, as the council's pointing out, there are a lot of competing interests out there, and there are solutions that need to be handled in terms of the increased traffic coming upon opening the bridge and other, and other issues, but that does require some coordination. I think that the burden on some of this interim planning falls disproportionately on Buckeye, and unfortunately, we were given less than a week's notice of this particular hearing, and I think it's a problem. As we left it with Mr. Toft in August, is that Buckeye's actually, in the history of communication with the city, the thought was having this initial meeting with Mr. Toft and the Fire Department and addressing certain issues. Buckeye provided a letter to the city, looking at several options or suggestions for the traffic impact study, to look at several options. They did that, and then, Mr. Toft actually wanted to meet with Buckeye to discuss these issues, and that's how we left it, which is, which is great. Unfortunately, the meeting to discuss what the city would be proposing is scheduled for Friday, which is two days after you're asked to approve this. That's a problem, because the report that we've gotten back, and some of the terminology that's been used, is actually very long on theories and very short on details. Buckeye has been asked, and is being asked, to do a bunch of, a bunch of improvements, including entrance and exits to its facilities on both sides of the street. These are issues that have to be addressed, and in conjunction with Buckeye and the city working together on this. Right now, that it entails potentially destruction and takedown of certain facilities, modification of other of Buckeye's facilities, which is a problem, because of course, there's the city ordinance, the zoning ordinance, as well as the general plan, which forbids modification to existing non-conforming legal structures out there, but that's something that Buckeye's being asked to do. So, these are things that I think there's ways around, but we do have to work together on that, and that coordination's been lacking. The presumptions in there is that there's, there's supposed to be changes to this vested use. We don't know how that's going to be. It's illegal under the zoning code. There's supposed to be changes to the dikes out there for containment dikes. We don't know how that's going to work from a sequel perspective. There's traffic and safety issues. There's land use issues that have not been addressed. And I think, just to finish up very quickly, when it comes to site access, when it comes to containment dikes, there's some great stuff in there, but there's a lot of unanswered questions that we have that supposedly are going to be worked out on Friday. And so, I think adoption of this plan by the City Council is a bit premature until those issues are worked out, because there's unanswered questions there. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, those are the only comment requests. Questions or comments from the council? I'm sorry, Mr. Leukin, do you want to provide any background in response to the comments that were made in the public testimony?
Sure. On Mr. Lowell's comments, actually, the district and the city are working on expansion of bus routes into the Bridge District as we speak. So, we are, we are looking at those, and we'll look to, we'll continue to look down South River Road to see if those are warranted at this time. We feel that the, you know, we purposefully kept the recommendation regarding the Buckeye facility in such a state that would allow us to continue to work with Buckeye Terminals to modify these interim improvements, which only consist of K-Rail and striping. The other things that Mr. Chadwick mentioned were more to do with the specific plan and some future long-term items, but I think we would continue to recommend, approval of the recommended action tonight, and that would give us enough flexibility to work with Buckeye to move forward with some interim low-cost improvements.
All right, thanks, Mr. Leukin. Yeah, I mean, the plan we have before us is relatively flexible in terms of the details of its implementation. And, are there discussion of this one? Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mayor Protem Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Council calendar. Thank you, Mr. Leukin, and team.
Is your mic on?
Is your mic on?
It's coming off. There we go. Our offices are closed Thursday and Friday of that Thanksgiving holiday. The December 5 McGowan Bridge dedication has been mentioned several times this evening. It's at 10 o'clock on December 5. Also on the 5th is the annual tree lighting, holiday tree lighting event here at City Hall. It's 6 o'clock on Friday. And I think that covers the key items between now and our next meeting on December 17. In addition, though, is the hydrogen fuel station event on December 10, and information has gone out to the council, and Art Schroeder's working on another document to send out to you as well.
All right, any questions on the calendar? All right, City Manager Report.
On behalf of Katie Yancey, the Delta Lane Project received a federal authorization for 1.4 million in tax credits. Katie's very, very excited about that. That's the good news. The tough news is now we have 180 days to start construction, so that'll be a major effort. We need to start construction May 13 of 2015.
Mark your calendars. Any questions on the City Manager Reports? City Attorney Reports? Staff direction for members of the council? Have no future agenda item requests, so is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Ms. Sandin, seconded by Mayor Protem Johannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.